All right. Well, what an amazing sight to see people here gathered in a public place. No masks on unless those that want to wear masks should. Do you want to give any statement to that effect? No.
You want me to?
If you feel appropriate, if you feel like you should wear a mask, I think the rule is that if you are not vaccinated, and you know that, you should be wearing a mask in a public place with public people where you are in the same room as somebody else. And we're not going to ask and we're not going to tell. So it's up to you, personal responsibility to deal with that in your way. And with that, I'd like to bring this meeting, this meeting of the City Council, the City of Placerville, to order at 5:10. Thank you for your patience and allowing us to go through our closed session report. And I think I'm going to take a, I want to do this. Just a second here. I want to get another one. Get everybody in it. Everybody smile. This is a, I'll get over here. Here we go. All right, thank you.
Is that proof?
Yep. This really happened. This is a momentous moment here. And it's been a, how many, it's been over a year since we have been in chambers and having the opportunity to meet in public and see each other's faces.
And we have a council member that's been a council member for six months, and this is her first time actually on the dais. So this is a big moment.
But I'm used to having this much room on my desk. Now I only have this much room up here. So it's a little more challenging. Enough of that. We're going to, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, and if you would please rise and join me in person in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. It sounds so much better when we're in person doing that. That's going to be my theme the whole night, I'm sure. All right, Ms. O'Connell, roll call, please.
Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Councilmember No?
Here.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Here.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Mayor Thomas?
I am here. All right, thank you very much. So the next item is ceremonial matters, and the item is LGBT Pride Month proclamation. And I got a few emails. I got one from Ms. Nicole Gottberg, and she asked if we could do a proclamation. And I, I don't know if I actually, I think somebody got back to you. It wasn't me, and I apologize for that, but I did put the wheels in motion to get this done. So we, so we do have a proclamation here. And Ms. Nicole Gottberg is from PFLAG, which is Parents and Family of Lesbian and Gays. And she has requested to honor the month of, that the city honor the month of June. And I will read our proclamation here to give you the full details. For more than two centuries, and let me start at the beginning, "A proclamation of the City of Placerville, recognized in the month of June 2021 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender, or LGBT Pride Month. Whereas, for more than two centuries, the founding principles and ideals of American life have included liberty, equality, freedom, freedom of expression, and the pursuit of happiness, which are intended to apply to everyone." And Martin Luther King Jr. proclaimed that "Injustice, anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere," inspiring real and lasting change to advance equality, respect, hope, and progress, generation after generation, affording greater understanding and acceptance for all. And whereas, equality of opportunity and freedom from discrimination are fundamental to ensuring economic success and personal fulfillment. And whereas, the City of Placerville celebrates diversity and recognizes the importance of its residents, visitors, and employees to safely express their ethnic, cultural, racial, and sexual orientation identities, which enriches our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Placerville does hereby recognize June 2021 as LGBT Pride Month and honors all efforts that provide opportunity for a life free of discrimination and prejudice." So, thank you very much, and I'm going to present this to Ms. Gottberg here, our proclamation. Let me sign it first.
So, hi, I'm Nicole Gottberg, and I wanted to thank you on behalf of PFLAG Placerville. PFLAG stands for Parents, Family, and Friends of Lesbians and Gays, and we're a nonprofit organization which has had a Placerville chapter for over 20 years. Our mission is to build a foundation of loving families united with LGBTQ+ people and allies who support one another and educate ourselves and our communities to speak up as advocates and tell all hearts and minds, respect, value, and affirm LGBTQ people. PFLAG provides an opportunity for dialogue about sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, and acts to create a society respectful of human diversity. We have our meetings on fourth Mondays at 6:30 PM. And if you would like to attend a meeting or find out more, you can reach out to me or email us at pflagplacerville@gmail.com. I also want to thank you personally, as one of your constituents who identifies as queer. It means a lot to me to be able to serve my community and see my local government recognize June as LGBT Pride Month and say that all of the people you represent should be able to live a life free from discrimination and prejudice. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. All right, thank you very much for your comments. Well received. Moving on, Mr. Driscoll, do you have a report of our closed session activity?
I do, and it's that the council did not take reportable action tonight in closed session.
All right. Onward and upward. Okay, if we can get a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Nope. Here and then? All right. Roll call, please. Oh wait, do we need to do roll calls now? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye. Thank you. All right. Announcements and presentations to the public. Jackie, I'll start with you. Councilmember comments.
All right. I'm unmuted. I attended Wagon Train, always fun watching that come down from Tahoe, and shortly after we have the ponies that left Sacramento to go to Missouri for the Pony Express ride.
All right. Michael?
Thank you. Again, it's good to be back and see people's faces. It's really nice as opposed to just virtually seeing people, so I'm really happy about that. Same, I had the pleasure of joining a couple of my colleagues actually downtown for Wagon Train, and it was a lot of fun. I think my favorite was the little kid in the little covered wagon that kind of came down as part of the parade. So it was, it was a great, a great time. I'm attending a CalCities recycling webinar tomorrow. I think it's, you know, with all the changes that are coming, and also kind of apropos for what we have in front of us coming up as well, just the changes that are dictated by Sacramento, and then the reality of those costs falling on us as a municipality. So that's it for me.
Yeah, thank you. Patty?
I practically have the same report as my colleagues because I was with them at Wagon Train, and we had a really good time. It was great seeing it come back, and I hope in the days to come that maybe they'll have a few more wagons enter the foray. And I enjoyed sharing with these two newbies the olden days of Wagon Train, because I've been participating since I was a little girl, and things have really changed, but, and I think they enjoyed hearing about all the antics that used to go on.
I did. I loved the idea that you got to be as the cheerleaders, that you guys would go in and out of the bars and other places.
A majorette.
Yeah, a majorette through the, some of the, through the bars. So yeah, definitely a different time.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
All right. I want to give a shout out to Rebecca Neves in the Engineering Department and all of our partners for wrapping up the Western Interchange Eastbound On-Ramp ahead of schedule. That's, that rarely happens in public works projects, so congratulations and thanks for your hard work. I want to let everyone know that the city has resumed summer activities through our Community Services Department, and the Summer Activity Guide is posted on our website. And there's all sorts of camps and classes, fitness, volleyball camps, the pool is open. It's just really great to see these things resuming, so I encourage everyone to check that out. Mayor Thomas, City Manager Morris, and Chief Ren and I met with Don Simone and Daniel DeMonte with County HHS to discuss and brainstorm some immediate solutions to the homeless encampments in Placerville and some potential funding sources. And you may have more to add to that, and we'll be working on this moving forward. It was a good meeting, and I really appreciate the time of Don Simone and Daniel DeMonte, and hopefully we can make some headway on this issue. And I've just been enjoying a more open California. I've been eating out in restaurants. It's really nice to be here and see everyone in person. It's just, it's nice to be kind of turning the corner, so things are good.
Yeah?
Yeah.
You know, walking outside without your mask on makes me feel a little naked sometimes, and I have to rethink what am I missing on my body? It's like, eh, we're all good. But it's a, sometimes it gives me a little awkward feeling, but I'm glad to get over that. A couple of things that I've done in the last couple of weeks, we had a grand opening of our first cannabis shop. And while I was asked to be the first purchase, person to purchase, I chose not to, but I, but there were plenty of people there to give them their money and give some of those tax dollars to our city. And so I, they, those, those people there, the two women, what, I lost their names all of a sudden, I didn't write it down. Annie?
Annie Aubrey and... I can't see her. Kimberly.
Kimberly, thank you.
Kimberly Carlisle.
They did a fantastic job, first with the grand opening, and with, you know, kind of, maybe the people that used to own Chucks may not think so, but of keeping some of the old, old experiences that you can see from Chucks, including their booths and some of the different old antiques and signs and things that they had, that you really get that feel of Chucks still, Chucks is still in the room. So it's, it's been a pretty neat project, and they're up and running, and they're, they're good to go. And we're looking forward to our second one coming online here in, you know, a while, right? Not too far in the near future. I had a meeting with CalCities, wasn't too exciting. We, you know, ebbs and flows. Our meeting with Don Simone was, was, one of the things that has been going on is, if you recall, a while back, we met with the county, and they, we had this joint meeting with Tahoe, the city, and, and the county about what we want to do with homelessness. And, and I felt, and I think Vice Mayor Taylor and I both agree that things are kind of stalled out. They talked about identifying properties, they talked about coming up with solutions that would create some, some permanent solutions and not just intermediate stuff. And so we kind of pushed back on the county a little bit, saying, what's going on? And, and, and right now it's strictly in discussions, but we are actively, we have been talking about this and working on it on a regular basis here at the city, and exploring different options, and everybody knows there's no perfect solution to this homelessness. But we, and we discussed that too, but the idea is that we want to work together with the county to, to really work hard to find a solution, and we're going to start pushing a little more. And I know they want to do the same thing. I think there's some political, it comes down to political will and availability of funds and availability of property. And then you have the NIMBYism, not in my backyard. And so all of these things are coming into play with these discussions, and I think that's one of the big challenges they have over at Board of Supervisors is, you know, you have five different districts, and five different districts would rather have it in another district's backyard. So, so that's a challenge at the county. So we're working, you know, we're trying to work through this, and we're going to continue working that. And in that light, I'm hoping that we're going to have a discussion about a future agenda item, a special meeting that we may hold next, next Tuesday or at a time that works for us, just on this issue, on homelessness. And so stay tuned, we'll be discussing that in future agenda items. And, and I, we received Eldorado EDCDC. Who was it? Talking about the grant? Yes. Woodrow? Woody, well Woody, but the staff member. Oh, Dan Bolster. Dan Bolster worked very hard for a grant. We received $250,000. We noticed that we would receive $250,000 today for emergency.
Evacuation.
Evacuation and resiliency plan. The resiliency plan. So we can look forward to our, I mean, that is a huge thing, and we can look forward to them exploring contracts with contractors and finding a way to work through that. I'm sorry I don't have all this information like right here, because we just got this this afternoon. At any rate, it's a great thing. There'll be a lot more communication about that in the future, but I was just excited to kind of share that business. So with that, I am going to, I'm going to, we're going to move on. And it looks like we are into 6.2, the Fire Safe Council presentation. And Steve Greiton, do you have a little bit on this?
Yeah, just briefly, I want to thank them for being here. I'm going to introduce, I don't really need to introduce because you know her, Chris Keeney, who is on our Planning Commission, but she's also, I believe, Chair right now of the Fire Safe Council. And I'll let her introduce Steve, who has come tonight to do this presentation for us. So, Chris?
It's really great to see you in person, and honestly, you're a little bit bigger than I remembered. I've been watching you on my little computer screen for a long time, and you're all in the small foot squares.
That hits too close to home, Chris.
You, you look great. I'm the Chair of the Placerville Fire Safe Council, as Cleve mentioned, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to present the update to the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, or CWPP. This is prepared for the Eldorado County Fire Safe Council by Deer Creek Consulting. The Eldorado County Fire Safe Council was formed in 2001, and today they have over 20 satellite fire safe councils under their purview, of which Placerville is just one. And the CWPP, this update is going to address all of those fire safe councils and their, their specific needs. This is the first time in a CWPP that Placerville has been included, and so tonight you're just going to hear about our section of the plan, the City of Placerville, and the surrounding area that's designated the Sphere of Recognition. That's a strange term, a lot of us have used a variation of that, but it's called the Sphere of Recognition of Placerville Fire Safe Council. It includes our city limits and some outlying areas that are adjacent but impact our fire, wildfire safety as well. We're fortunate to have Mr. Steve Greiton here tonight to present the results of the analysis and the recommendation, recommendations from his collaboration with Deer Creek Consulting. Steve has a wealth of experience and a broad range of wildfire topics, including actual wildland firefighting, smoke jumping, studying the effects of wildfire on the landscape, and developing plans to reduce potential for destructive wildfires in our communities. Mr. Greiton holds a master's degree in environmental rhetoric and communication from California State University Chico. He's the owner of his own consulting firm, Open Canopy. He's a native of Eldorado County, and he is just moving back into our area. I just learned that today, so welcome back. And so now I'll turn it over to Steve. Welcome.
Hello. Hello. So I'll be speaking today just to update the council and to provide you some information and an opportunity for feedback on the process that we've taken to update the CWPP. It has not been a complete overhaul, but more it has been to, oh, go ahead. There we go. Okay. Don't want to shout at you. Yeah, so my goal here is to, again, just be able to provide some information on the tactics and the, you know, the strategy that we used in putting this together. It is, again, just more for the, for the entire county, of which, like she said, like Kim said, it is, this is one of the 24 satellites that we've been working with to develop subplans and to make those fit together nicely in a comprehensive countywide plan. So if there's not any further ado, I'll, we'll see if we're up to date here on my, on my clicker skills. So as she, I think Kim hit this, or Chris hit this really well, but again, Deer Creek Resources is the prime contractor, and Wildland RX, Mr. Barry Callenberger, who's worked in the county for a very long time, at various capacities, is the lead on fire, on fire behavior and the project layout, and I've been taking a part to do some writing, editing, and communication. As you all know, there were some differences in communication over the last year, so I've been working with the group to be able to, you know, stay on track, stay on time, and get things, get things done. The final partner here we have is a registered professional forester who will be putting together prescriptions and project worksheets, which is something that I'll cover later in the presentation. Where are we going there, guys? Okay, so just real quickly, the CWPP, I don't want to be redundant here, but it is definitely a planning document that includes a collaborative framework of engaging with government entities, state key stakeholders, fire protection districts, and interested public in developing what are the priorities for the county. So this also trickles down to the satellite level, where, again, the same process, these same stakeholders are involved at the very, you know, whether it's, you know, a small, a small HOA that also has a CWPP, or it is something as sophisticated and perhaps more complex like Placerville itself. So the same strategy is used to be able to leverage, you know, federal lands, to be able to engage our partners that we can't necessarily control, but we can, we can increase their ability to do planning and hazardous fuel reduction by engaging them, and they are one of the mandatory signatories for the plan. So in, in the end, a CWPP is the document that we put together to identify priorities and projects for executing fire, fire prevention and fuels reduction projects. The big thing again, you know, with the CWPP is that we get this down on paper, we have some logic to the way we put it together, and that we have essentially priorities to work from that allow for smooth grant, grant requests and, and, you know, collaborative work. I mentioned that federal agencies need to be doing the, to be a part of this, and being that we are surrounded in, in many areas, whether it's BLM or the USDA Forest Service, there's a lot of areas within, you know, within that mile and a half boundary that, that we can leverage that action, and we can increase that action by putting these priorities into the CWPP. And again, there's some expedited planning processes through the, you know, through NEPA, where we can leverage that proximity to be able to increase the scale, or the pace and scale ideally. The big thing, and it's not coming up too well here, but the, essentially the four things that we are going through four stages is just meeting with the stakeholders, you know, getting that buy-in, getting the stakeholders to the table, you know, whether it's key folks like the Fire Protection District, utilities, et cetera, bringing them to the table with the Fire Safe Councils and developing priorities and project options. They've gone on to incorporate what was already there as older projects and to develop new projects that provide a comprehensive plan, essentially linking areas that might be discreet as a Fire Safe Council, say Texas Hill, which is outside of Placerville specifically, but a lot of the actions of Texas Hill are, whether or not they do fuels reduction or they make the airport a priority, these are things that, that come together with trying to mesh those together. So Barry and the team has been identifying these projects, of which we'll see. And then the third step there is to just put these projects together, be able to present to the Fire Safe Councils what we have, and to get some feedback as to how, how that sits, how that lands, if, and to find some priorities out of that, out of those initial projects. And so the fourth bullet point here that's in red to show you how important it was, and we can't see, it's to define the project prescription. So this is essentially the registered professional forester getting in there, walking the ground, and really giving folks, you know, what is the, a really good cheat sheet for being able to submit a grant and to know exactly what you're going to do with that grant when you get it. So the whole, you know, it's a much ado to, to this, the main objective of this update, again, isn't to reanalyze the entire county, but it is really to do this fourth step, which is to really get shelf-ready and put it, pull it off the shelf and put it into an application and try and get some funds moving for a project that we know is comprehensive and it fits well with all the other Fire Safe Councils. So that's kind of where we're at right now. Again, I say that we are on track, and we, and I'll show you the timeline here. So going through the definition data sheets, we've been working on that this year. We're in the midst of a draft. We've gone through the majority of the satellite fire safe councils. Placerville has been completed for the draft update, and then later this year we'll be doing the finalized version for the countywide CWPP update for all the projects. We're getting smaller and smaller, but the, I wanted to identify just the things that Placerville had pointed out in their CWPP, and I'm not going to read straight off of there, save everybody that, but these are very, I found them to be very comprehensive and very, very savvy goals to put in, because they really identify some of these key things. Whether it's the initial is just to put together the CWPP for Placerville, which we've been able to do, and to incorporate that into the master document. And then also, you know, the education and information to the residents of Placerville to be able to do the outreach to increase that pace and scale and get people to buy in. Additionally, to promote and fund and implement these safety actions, these projects, and the education in the area. And then finally, to participate in the development implementation of, of evacuation and preparedness for the Placerville area. So I don't have to tell anybody here, but this is obviously a hub of large sorts in this area of the county, and, you know, this sounds like the Fire Safe Council coming together and getting the CWPP is going to be a great step towards, towards that fourth bullet point there. Okay, so we'll move through this pretty quick. I think we hit this. The main thing is creating the map books. In addition to the CWPP, the map books are going to be essentially just putting together a portion of what goes into a grant proposal. So again, these things are ready to go, off the shelf, and I'll be able to cover that with some assistance here to be able to show you the map books. Some of these are, of course, better done maybe in print, but we'll go off the screen here and do our best. And again, the RPF, as per a lot of funding sources, specifically CalFire, having that RPF involved is a key step to making sure that the project is recognized as a valid fuel reduction project. So this is essentially the worksheet we're going to contain for the, for the grant, you know, making these grants ready. And again, some of it takes from the CWPP process, but we really want to make sure it's things that hit all the grant components that we, we know they're going to ask for. The strategy behind the project before I show you the map really is to, to identify one of the prime issues is evacuation routes. A lot of the work that we've done around the county and, and some of it, you know, associated with Placerville is around evacuation routes. More than anything, we want people to be able to get out safely early and to allow for, you know, reasonable entrance for suppression resources. Some of the strategy, of course, the tactics we were using to find these parcels and to locate them, it's to use the terrain for advantage, so where we have a ridge top, we're much more likely to stop a fire on a ridge than we are mid-slope. Road access to get the work done, to make sure that we're not trying to cut roads in to get this work done, proximity to other projects, et cetera. Main thing that it's going to have a positive effect on the fire behavior, that we can show through the modeling that we're, that we're putting these projects in these locations is going to have an impact on a fire moving across the landscape. And with the main goal, of course, is to protect homes and infrastructure from the damages. Okay. And even smaller here, so I can show you very briefly, and if we pull up the map books, essentially these are the seven projects, and you can see on the far left that they have a priority ranking. And then, again, this is a, this is a method where we, we put the projects together, and then we put it back to the Fire Safe Councils to determine, you know, at what ranking do they put it. And here you have one through seven. It's, we're allowed to have ties, which is why you see only two numbers up there, but again, these are going to be, you know, one and two. We'll start at the ones, and we'll move on to the twos, and this is going to be ideally the way they're put together. It's not a fixed, you know, it's not a fixed order, but it is more of just showing that we've done the due diligence to evaluate these projects and their, and their importance. So I'll, if there's no immediate questions on that, I can move on and perhaps ask, I think that's my last slide, and if we wanted to pull up the map books, there's a PDF with some larger maps that'll show us, again, what these one through seven projects look like, and how am I doing on time? Okay? All right. Excellent. Yeah, excellent. If it lets you zoom in, we'll be styling, but, so there's a, the overview map. We've got, we've essentially got an overview, and then we do segmented per project maps. So where we have the overview kind of gives you the, the big picture of how this ties in. You'll see in the, on the top part, which is to the north of us, of course, we've got some smud projects, and you'll see that some of our projects tie in with the smud projects. You know, without going into scrutiny of the exact location and everything, you know, the maps are here to present, you know, essentially. the maps are here to present, you know, essentially where are they relative to the infrastructure? We don't do anything too fancy on these because we want it to be just straightforward and able to be included to illustrate clearly where other projects are and the importance of the ones we selected.
Quick question, are there any ongoing PG&E projects besides smud?
I would say that there definitely are, I think at the fires, at the county level, I know that they've been supported for the chipping program, but I cannot necessarily speak to everything else they have. Yeah. And again, I'm, yeah, Dave, you're probably not. So short of just explaining where every one of these goes, the map books are, again, a tool to be used in the, as part of the project worksheet and to be used for the grant submissions in conjunction with those project worksheets. And from here, I guess I would open it for questions or clarification lest I just start pointing at the map.
Steve, thank you very much for your presentation. There is so much going on in the backgrounds and so much going on between the county and the city and all the different programs here that people are just not aware of, and your presentation really highlights the skill and the effort that's being put into this on so many different levels. And it's, again, this is one of those things that happens in the background that most people don't know about until you bring it up and you do a presentation to the public here, and I truly appreciate the opportunity to see how we're getting prepared to commence to proceed here with these projects. And that seems like we do a lot of getting ready, and, but this is, this looks like a great opportunity that we have to go out and be very competitive for some of these grants that otherwise, without this investment, we would not have the opportunity. And I don't think that people realize how important it is to have shelf-ready projects, to have these things in place to be able to be competitive in the grant world out there. You just have to be ready for it.
Yes.
You know, we're doing that with our cities and our roads, and it's paid dividends in the long run to be prepared, and part of our budget this, today, is going to, is preparing for some of those things to receive grants as well, so. So thank you very much for your comments. Do we have any questions or comments here from the council?
Thank you, that was really interesting. I've kind of been a liaison with the group and our council, and so I've seen and heard about a lot of these, but just for clarification, would you say again how, I mean, I know there's these maps, I think you've shown us seven of them, but I, and I'm pretty sure I'm remembering correctly that we, they're rated, and you're going after specific areas, and is it mostly for, and I know you just said it, but it's clearing, finding, I was just fascinated with the way you guys figure all this out, but it has a lot to do with the way the wind blows, where, you know, comes, I never knew all those things until I started, you know, experiencing it and hearing, so just share a little bit about that.
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, where we, these projects are designed, you know, at a landscape level. We're really trying to look at the entire Fire Safe Council, you know, within that bound, within that sphere of recognition, and look within that at, you know, some of the fire modeling, and then comparing that, of course, to the values of risk, looking at, you know, historical weather data and which way does the wind blow on consistent, you know, a consistent basis. And so Mr. Callenberger, he goes through and does something where he essentially maps it to where for every hundred foot within this, within, you know, the sphere of recognition and beyond, we get an idea of what are the flame lengths? Should the wind blow and we have a fire in September or October, what does that look like? Is it, you know, in some areas we might have, you know, four-foot flame lengths, and that's, and that's a good thing, but we see others where the vegetation's thicker, it's growing underneath the trees, and that's going to show up on our models and in a mapping GIS framework as, you know, red blocks and yellow blocks, right, low fire, big fire, and we compare that, you know, with the other data, and then we start to be able to make decisions on, you know, is this a defensible place if we were to clear the fire, if we were to clear the fuels here, you know, eliminating the ladder fuels, reducing the surface fuel loading, multiple methods, of course, you know, machine methods and hand methods. But it really is trying to evaluate that landscape as a whole and to select these small areas where we can have the most impact. I think everyone would agree that if we could do it across the vast majority of private lands, if landowners were able to clear everything, that would be the ideal, you know, to reduce that potential, but when we go for grants, we want to be competitive and to show that we are competitive, we do our, we do our best to determine and to present what are the most logical and most effective places to spend that money, to ask for it and then put it on the ground.
Thank you.
And I should also just say that your Fire Safe Council, I've worked with a handful, they do a lot with very little, and it's
They really do.
It's staggering. I'm always impressed, always impressed, and glad to be working with them. Yeah.
Thank you, Steve, for your presentation, and I want to applaud Chris and the Fire Safe Council for making this research and plan come together. Having a plan like this really is necessary for being able to receive funds for big projects like this. One question I have is, you know, when it comes to implementing these fire breaks, I'm assuming a lot of them are going over multiple parcels of private property, what's the process for engaging those landowners and getting everyone on board to kind of come together for a cooperative project like this?
Yeah, good question, excellent question. It can differ, but a lot of it, it starts with the letter. It starts with the desire to work with landowners, you know, to put forward, you know, the argument essentially that your work on your land will do, will have benefits over a large scale across the landscape, and approaching, you know, it depends on who manages, of course, we have a local resource conservation district that's very good at doing exactly that, getting buy-in from landowners, and really just, you know, we can't work within places that have homes, right, so we're not going to work within the defensible space, but everything outside of that, that's really where we try and engage and say, we're not going to work in your backyard, but we do need to work on the back forty, and that becomes, and that becomes just a dialogue, and most of it has to, some of it has to include, you know, educating and trying to get folks to kind of see the big picture, because that's where we're working, that's where you all work at, is kind of at that, at that larger level where we need to incorporate all of this, and hopefully folks, more often than not they do, will have little blocks sometimes that don't always make it, but generally when we can identify large land parcels and try and get buy-in, that's the best path forward.
Thanks.
Again, thank you, Steve, for the presentation. It was very good, I love the maps, the maps really help lay out, I think, you know, exactly like those ridge lines and, you know, see those fire breaks on a topographical map. Question is, I know the state included some dollars in this year's budget, at least in the framework of this year's budget, do we have a sense of, one, would we be eligible for any of those funds, and it's kind of what are the sources that are out there? I mean, what are, what are we looking at, you know, is it federal dollars, is it state, is it all the above?
It's going to be all the above, you know, lots, as you know, money is always going to come with a string attached or conditions, but a lot of these projects are designed to be, you know, where they are just based around the infrastructure and very hard and straightforward fuels reduction projects. I mean, you've got everything from the clearinghouse grants through the California Fire Safe Council, you know, or you've got, you know, local hazard mitigation plans through FEMA, you've got some of it, and I know CAL FIRE, I can't quite get too far in the weeds, I know there's going to be some, some bits that aren't going to work through SRA, through state responsibility area funds that might not apply as much, but even being able to apply to, you know, utility partners like PG&E who have a vested interest in kind of that residential, that residential setup where it comes, you know, whether it's hazard trees or just simply trees that are growing underneath power lines, I think there's, I think all options should be on the table, state, federal, and then, you know, at the local level, of course, to sometimes have to match that, to be able to meet the big funds, you might have to come up with some internally to be able to take advantage, like FEMA and others that require that match.
Thank you.
I want to thank you, it's a lot of work put into these maps and the Fire Safe Council and everyone, just incredible. They covered a lot of my questions, but I'm wondering, you know, locally what we can be doing, I mean, we'll be waiting for the grant for the, you know, the big work, but what maybe you think we could be doing locally to help move it along?
Yeah, I think, you know, Chris and the four equal goals of just this group here, I think one of the most fundamental ones that I've seen just in any modeling or any type of fire behavior, where we have ridge lines and we have these strategic areas, that's excellent, and we can show, you know, some landscape, some slowing of a fire spread, but when you look at the populations and you look at the home densities and things like that, the biggest thing that can be done to really slow a fire will be defensible space. The fact that, you know, neighbor to neighbor, you know, that 200 foot between folks, if it's that far, you know, fires move through that real well, and those are the things, those are the places that we really have to start, we really have to develop the ethic of, you know, homestead, you got to, you got to secure that house because while the fire services are excellent and responsive and, you know, adept, there's just not enough resources or enough, not every, not every house will receive an engine, and I think that reality perhaps could be emphasized, and just to be able to, you know, connect resources where folks might not, you know, might not be physically able, things like that, education and/or, you know, cooperative work is a great way to start that, and cooperative volunteer work that counts as match, so that also works where, you know, stewardship work is that sweat equity that also goes towards funding. But defensible space, that's, the research shows that that 100 feet is the one that determines, if you're on a steep slope, kick it up a little bit, but otherwise, you know, that 100 feet is the starting spot for a lot of the good work we need to do.
Great, thank you very much.
Just a couple more questions. The, what is the cost if we were to, let's say, get our wish list fulfilled and we got the grants? What are we looking at in terms of a cost for a project like this?
Well, so, you know, broken into the seven different, without the spreadsheet in front of me, I know we're probably at an average of about 75 acres or so, 60 to 70 acres per project for some of these up here. Looking at it with planning and depending on the money and the, essentially the environmental compliance through that, you might be getting into what is roughly $35,000 to $4,000 an acre for planning and, and so essentially, we multiply each of those, you know, some of them can be done less, you know, you can get, depending on the location, if it's in a very used area, along the right-of-way, things like that, it might go down in the planning, but I'd say a reasonable ballpark is $3,000 to $4,000 an acre and being able to, and multiply that by the acres you got.
So you're looking at a couple million, somewhere in that range, huh?
Yeah, firm. Each sub-Fire Safe Council will probably be looking at about $3 million for the project list we have, three million plus, and that's for all of them, not just the priority ones.
Is that a reasonable expectation that we could see opportunities and grants come up for that amount?
Yeah, I think it's, you know, when you separate the planning out, it doesn't quite look as big a number, and then you can get competitive and ideally get it down to about, you know, 2,000, 2,500 an acre for, depends on where it is, if you can get machines in there. I think, yes, when need be, you can get more competitive, but a lot of, there's a lot of work going on right now, and I think incentives to contractors that actually do the work, and to do it quickly and effectively, I think it's not unreasonable to start at some of those numbers.
Okay. Often we are compared, people like to say, we're going to end up being another paradise. Do we have the same topographical winds, all the, all the things that really brought together that perfect storm for paradise? Do we have that here? Is it, in degrees of difference, how would you describe the difference between those two?
Interestingly enough, I was actually, I lived in Chico at the time that that happened, and I worked closely with the Fire Safe Council there, and I was in Paradise and Magallia a lot. I can say that there's some differences in the topography and just the fire history of the area, Jarbo Gap and, the name, search of the P, it's not Pendola, it's in the canyon where it started, essentially right by Jarbo Gap, right? You know, through that, that canyon's burned so many times, I think they're stopping, I don't think they're counting anymore. We don't necessarily have the alignment that happens as consistently with that, with the weather patterns you get there. Essentially Jarbo Gap forms what is essentially a pressure relief valve between systems of, you know, the east side of the range and the west side of the range, and so what you have there was fairly, fairly unique. It's fairly unique in its, in the way that it happened, but I think generally, South Fork, you know, the South Fork of the American, we have these features that do essentially, that are potential, you know, that could come into alignment. Fire history in this area doesn't necessarily show Placerville is being hit that hard that many times, like we see on the, on the south side or on the north side of the river, the south slope, looking at, you know, Kelsey, Georgetown, all that stuff. But I'd say, anything's possible, we plan for what's probable, and that's probably, you know, fire's likely, fire's going to happen, California will have, will have fires every year, whether it's humid ignitions or natural, and I always like to say when the magazines call and they ask me that question, I say it's a set of characteristics, and while we have some, we're not necessarily going to be a clone of Paradise, but we have our own unique but similar features to work with.
Well, thank you. It seems like every year a fire pops up between Coon Hollow and Weber Creek, almost every single year, so it's just a matter of time, it seems like a matter of time, and these guys are on it like, really fast.
Yeah.
And I come up with those every time. And so they, so we do get them out, but, you know, we're very fortunate, you know, though I think the winds are often in our favor, and they're very quick to respond. Helicopters are up there putting out a 20-acre fire, and they know the consequences of it, but, you know, one of those days when the winds aren't in our favor or things just don't align for our benefit, it could be trouble, so thank you very much for your, for all the work you're doing. Chris, thank you so much for your effort on the Fire Safe Council, as for, could you pass on our appreciation for the full Fire Safe Council as well? I think it's, I would appreciate that. Oh, I'd love that, yes, please do, and we'll have a few, you know, any public comments as well.
He is tall. On behalf of the Fire Safe Council, thank you so much, Steve, that was excellent. Appreciate your work, the work of Barry that you've done on our behalf. Also wanted to thank you for including a lot of the information that was in our 2019 risk assessment now labeled a CWPP. It's just volunteers worked on that, and it's just heartening to know that we are on the right track. We went out and evaluated our housing stock and some of our, what we thought were our risks, and sure enough, following, we had a good format to follow, and we were on the right track. The CWPP emphasizes the opportunities we have for public education for home hardening and vegetation management or defensible space, and we're going to continue to rely on this CWPP to direct our outreach in the future. I wanted to bring the council up to speed on how we've already benefited from the analysis from Deer Creek and that Steve Graydon has done. The maps that you saw tonight, we used as part of our grant application to CAL FIRE just last month, and this, I wanted to bring this up to kind of address the concerns that several of you had, just to let you know that, you know, we are trying to get this work done. We went together with Texas Hill and collaborated also with Mark Egbert of our Resource Conservation District to submit this grant, and it's for approximately $2 million, and what we did in that application was we kind of dropped the priorities that the Fire Safe Council had set about a year ago, the one through seven, we just put them all in there in this larger grant, and we're waiting to hear if we get funding. The grant application itself was, you know, very comprehensive. If we happen not to get funding this time, I think we'll just modify it and update and submit it again to see if we can get the money that we need. So to answer Michael Saragosa's question, sources of funding from the state, CAL FIRE, also as Steve mentioned, now that we have this CWPP and the worksheets, we can start looking for funding from other sources as well, perhaps maybe one project at a time, not all seven, like we did with the recent CAL FIRE grant, and so also that I hope answers Mayor Thomas's question about the amount. We took a little more conservative number as far as treatment, and that also gets back to something I wanted to emphasize about these maps that we're looking at, this is a planning document, this is a very, you know, 10-mile-high look at our landscape, and to build these fuel bricks and to do the roadside clearing that we're talking about, we'll have to, when we acquire the funding, we will have to go out and we'll have to, it, when we acquire the funding, we will have to go out and start doing that specific outreach that we, uh, I think that was, uh, maybe you, uh, Jackie or Kara, uh, that you mentioned. We have to find the willing, uh, landholders, uh, who, who want to work with us to improve the wildfire resilience of their property and the adjoining properties. And so when you look at these maps, uh, please, uh, maybe expect a little leeway as we, as we get the funding and, and where we work first. There may be some, uh, unknowns, uh, actually the first step is to do a more specific environmental survey, uh, to make sure that there aren't any sensitive resources there. And, uh, then make sure that we, uh, have these willing landholders that, uh, want us to work on their property and understand how they're helping, uh, protect our community. So, uh, I just wanted to make sure that people, uh, kind of use that as, uh, the maps are a general location. It's based on the science, uh, where the most strategic locations are to stop for wildfires, either from our prevailing south-southwest winds or, uh, from the, uh, less often, less occurring, uh, winds more from the north-northeast. Uh, so we're trying to protect our community in as many ways as we can. And also these are the, the big vegetation management projects, the fuel breaks. Um, Jackie, I think you mentioned what can we be doing in the meantime? Well, the defensible space, getting in touch with our property owners, our homeowners, to work on that defensible space around their homes so that should a wildfire come through in the, you know, the near future, uh, we've done everything we can to, uh, mitigate that, uh, the potential for loss and loss of life. I just, I want to wrap up. I, uh, see this, I think Mayor Thomas, you mentioned that there's a lot of things happening and, uh, the CWPP is just one element. We have, uh, a lot of, people have taken this on voluntarily to improve the conditions around, uh, their homes and their properties. And I, I want to thank all of them, uh, the nameless individuals who have been working hard to do that. You see that as you, as you drive around the improvements. It's also, uh, a part of the, um, the benefit we're getting from our, uh, vegetation management ordinance. You know, we would prefer that people just do this voluntarily and, uh, get the work done as soon as possible. But, uh, you know, with, um, the threat of a fine, you know, maybe that's what it takes to get their attention. So all of these things kind of work in concert. And, uh, so I just want to conclude and, and thank everyone for their attention to this matter, for your time, for allowing us to present to the group. I know you have other business to get on with and, uh, again, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Chris. And, uh, at this point, if anybody would like to have any comments regarding this item, we'll open it up for public comment. Please step up, uh, approach the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is nice to be back. I think what we can do as a city mostly is to put some emphasis on people doing their defensible space and keep chirping on it so that, uh, they know that if you don't, you'll get a fine. And if you don't, I can tell you from experience working for thirty-five years with the Forest Service, that when you have a fire crew going in and they're part of their, their mission is to protect homes. They'll, they evaluate those homes as they go by. So you take your firefighting rig and you go by that house and you take a look. And if all you can see is the roof line for all the brush and trees that are right next to the house, you say, can't save that one, drive on. And people need to be aware of that, that if they haven't done their defensible space, if they haven't done their part, don't expect the firefighters to come in and do it for them. They need to have that defensible space so that their home is savable. Because in a big fire, ask the people who live in South Tahoe. Uh, when the Angora Fire hit, a lot of those homes couldn't be saved. A few of them could be, but the head of La Honton Water Quality Board lost his house because he didn't have his defensible space. And a lot of people lost their house because they hadn't cleaned the, the needles and leaves off the roof of their houses. And they burned and they lost two hundred and fifty homes just in that fire, just in La Honton. Now Paradise was worse, but if you drive around Placerville and look at the overhanging branches on, on people's roofs and the piles of leaves on their, on their roofs in the, in the, the gutters, you say, you know, if I was a firefighter, I'd say, good luck, guys. You're not getting any of my time and efforts because I'm not risking my life when you wouldn't even do your part. That's my comment.
Hi, my name's Leo Bennett-Kochan. Get to see me finally.
Yes.
Uh, forty-five years, I grew up in San Diego County and we nickname ourselves sometimes Canyon Cities. This is Ravine City. Move up here, I'm in Sacramento River City and I have to get myself a rowboat. Now I move up the mountain and it's like, oh my God, we're talking about fire? Things have changed and I just want to share stories, how important it is. We actually did drills down in San Diego, a neighborhood, a block. Cause if you don't practice this stuff, you forget. And so maybe our mayor could come and, you know, encourage people. Cause unfortunately I lost a friend who forgot, number one, evacuate. Don't spend that extra two minutes trying to save something. And then his son barely survived with three degree burns. And again, it doesn't happen often enough, but growing up there, it happened at least five times. And I can tell you, when you have a canyon or a ravine and the wind is fast enough and you don't see it that often, but that fire took out firefighters, trained professionals, because of the rate of acceleration when the wind and all those variables, like was shared, you know, doesn't come together that often and it's nothing to mess with. And I made the mistake once, saving my animals and I can still remember just driving down that firewall. You know, I was still clear to go, but I should have gone ten minutes earlier in hindsight. So I just encourage you to do everything you can, that people understand that things have changed, defensible space, evacuation plans, but get on it, get on it fast and nothing rebuilds a life. Thank you.
Thank you, Leo.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you and I hope I remember how to behave in public. I just want to ask, we have some large pieces of land that are vacant. And I know on the south side, there's an area that always comes up above Willsey up to Country Club. On the north side, we have Quartz Mountain and the area behind the Senior Center. And I want to know what can be done to get those owners, I mean, I hope that that's part of the plan, to really make those owners do things. Because I know people who live near the Quartz Mountain homeless camp fire and, um, they have even talked to the owner of the property there or someone that manages it. And, and still nothing gets done and the fire truck comes up again. And so we need to take care of those properties and make the owners do what they need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, seeing no, uh, further people, uh, we'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the council. And, um, do we have, uh, just a brief explanation of some of the things we're doing in communication with some of these property owners?
Um, I've looked at Pierre, I think those properties that they're being referred to are on our, uh, our, we have active code enforcement, uh, cases on those, but Pierre, do you want to address that quickly?
Yes, we do. We, we do our best to identify all the large parcels that are basically giant tinder boxes and work with the property owner to get them, um, get them cleared out. Uh, the one particular property, uh, the speaker mentioned, the one off of, uh, Wilsey, uh, that's a hundred and twenty-eight acre parcel. The city recently received a, uh, letter, a notice from the bank that it's going into foreclosure. And so again, I think those kinds of situations limit the city's ability really to get action from the property owner, especially when the property's in, let's just say in a transitional period. But we are doing our best. I know the, the property owner previously was working with the tenant and then the tenant was doing his best to provide a, uh, fifty to one hundred foot, uh, fire break around the perimeter of the property. Uh, some of the other properties, I think you mentioned, the one in Quartz Mountain, uh, we've been trying to work with, with our, our city attorney. Some of the problems with those properties is they're so underwater that the property owner won't do anything about it. In fact, I understand one of those, uh, properties, uh, was on the, uh, the court steps to be sold, uh, at auction due to non-payment of property tax. But there were no takers because I think there's a million dollars or something on some of these properties. So they're so underwater, there's really nothing that can be done about it. So I know we've looked at maybe trying to figure out a way to get some funding where then the city could use this funding to go in there, hire a contractor, clear the property and then lean the property, which is probably a good option if we could get that, that seed money from the start. Uh, but some of these properties are underwater. I'm not really sure how that's going to work financially and so it's a lot of, it's a lot of legalities we got to work through. But just in a nutshell, uh, we are trying to do our best to identify those larger properties, get them cleaned up. But we do have some problem properties out there that are a little bit more difficult, especially when you have, uh, homeless camps on some of these properties with the threat of, uh, uh, a fire or something that could start and then could really cause some problems for us.
Thank you, Pierre. All right, and, uh, thank you for all the comments on this. And, uh, we're going to go ahead and move on to our next item on the agenda. And that is, uh, we're going to jump to public comment. Now these are items, all these items are that, well, let me read it here. It's much better if I read it. Uh, this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter that is not on the agenda. Uh, that is within the subject matter and jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on our agenda except by special action of the city council under very specific circumstances. I reserve the right to limit the speaker's time to three minutes and you are not allowed to make personal attacks or in, on individuals or make comments which are slanderous or which may invade an individual's, individuals' personal privacy. Now, one of the things that we, uh, we have discussed at the infinitum over the last couple of, uh, three or four meetings, we made a change to, uh, our agenda to do a time certain at six o'clock. And that has, we have failed miserably at trying to adhere to that because it seemed like every time we hit, uh, one of our agenda items before that, it would go way past it. And so, uh, Kara and I and Cleve sat down, we kind of noodled over how to approach this. And, and we have decided to, um, keep the agenda, the, um, public comments at a specific place on the agenda instead of a specific time on the agenda. And that's just the way it'll go. We've been doing that for decades. It worked well. Um, the county seems to be able to pull it off, but they, they're, they operate their agenda quite a bit differently over there than we do here. So, uh, from going forward at this point, we are going to have it at a specific place on the agenda, but not a specific time. And with that, um, I'm going to go ahead and open up, uh, for a public comment. Please.
Thank you. Um, I'm Ruth Michelson and it's nice to be back. It's kind of strange to see everybody, uh, and to be here, but it's, it's nice. I want to start by what you said about, um, public comment. Back when you changed this meeting to five o'clock and there was concern that some people couldn't get here because of their work schedule, the compromise was that you were going to make public comment at six o'clock to make sure that, uh, there could be due representation and it was a good governance decision. So I don't know when you're going to put it on the agenda, but I hope you don't do it too early because it was part of that decision. Um, also I'm hoping that I could just thank you for the, um, resolution that you passed tonight. I know we're to speak about things that aren't on the agenda, but we didn't have a chance to speak on that. Could I just thank you for that? Yeah, the resolution. I think it's the first time the city has done such a res- a resolution recognizing June as LGBTQ month. And, um, I think it's really a great step that you did that. I could be wrong, perhaps in the past, in the distance past it was done, but, um, much appreciated. Just as you did the resolution, what I call for short, the no hate resolution that you did a number of months ago. I think that's, uh, were wonderful steps that the city took. And I, um, wanted to mention because I'm familiar with the recall, um, petition for all of you, of which, um, I'm not particularly in support of. I think you're doing a good job as best you can. Um, but one of those points was that it was claimed that you had failed to protect and honor and respect the history, heritage and culture and diversity of the people here. But tonight you did actually honor the diversity of the people here. So I thank you again for that.
Thank you, Ruth. I have my slip. Learning how you're doing these things, I don't know if you want us to queue up or in all those efficient ways. I think, uh, pretty much you, people just approach the podium and when somebody stops approaching the podium, we'll close public comment, so. Sounds good. Yeah, just, next person shows up, uh, we'll go ahead and go from there. Well, I'm really excited to be here, so I'm not allowed to like use any basketball skills or anything, right? Get here earlier. So I'm wearing my mask and I urge you guys to consider trying to come up ways with the county to improve our compliance because we're only at about fifty percent vaccination. And I'm sure I'm surrounded by vaccinated people, but I have an immune compromised wife. Uh, she's on the journey with cancer, doing okay. Uh, but, you know, I just choose to lower my risk variables and I wish we could get up to eighty percent because then I'd feel a lot better. Uh, on a lighter note, just to show how we're, uh, transitioning, I enjoyed hearing Vice Mayor Taylor sharing, uh, that they're opening up and resuming, uh, the summer programs, but my brain said re-zoom. So I had to make a switch there, then, oh, summer's not happening virtually. And then Mayor Thomas, I encourage you to consider CBD. Uh, cannabis doesn't always have, uh, the psychoactive and I just want to share a little joke that I am glad that you're opening it up because as my mother aged and her cohort aged, some of them found CBD to be very helpful. And they did not want to go there. That wasn't their culture. So my dear sweet mother would ask my dear sweet son to get a CBD brownie that she put in a brown bag and delivered at church. You know, and I'm up here going down there visiting, what's my mother doing with a brown bag? And so she told me, so now at least they can go somewhere and not have to do a church exchange. So, thank you. I also want to affirm the proclamation and ask you to consider adding action steps to it. You know, I'm sure all of you are aware of your history, especially in the area of gay rights and that you've had proclamations in the past, that there was some tension in the first reopening events. And so I think following up a proclamation, just following up a fire plan shows the commitment you're showing tonight, but helps take it to the next step. You guys went through a really hard time in terms of the noose removal from publicly funded. I'm surprised how many they are, so if you need any help, I got a blue marker, uh, but I'm glad to see it's not there. And a lot of great ideas. I heard Mayor Thomas talk about how we need to work on our identity, have a book, all of that. You know, you have so much on your plates, but I urge you to consider at some point the idea that was given to you by the facilitator, have some sort of positive healing event to consider either updating the logo or updating your values. I mean, there's a lot of things that you could consider bringing to the community where people can hopefully find, there's a lot of shared history. I wanted to end on a shout out for Terry Ziegler from Parks and Recs. I really wanted to do something at Wagon Train Days. He is such a calming personality. Thank you. Thank you, Leo.
Don't quite know how these things work. Um, hi, my name's Michelle. It's nice to see you all in person. Um, I want to echo what Ruth said. I greatly appreciate you guys passing the resolution tonight. I think that symbols are very important and that's very symbolic. Speaking of symbols, um, I do appreciate greatly that the nooses have been removed from the street signs, um, downtown. I don't know the process and I'm sure it's a big one, one that you're considering in terms of how to remove the noose. considering in terms of how to remove the nooses from the rest of the symbols around the city, the logos, but they're still everywhere. So the noose is technically removed, but really, when you're driving around the city and you still see them on logos, it doesn't feel removed. So I'm hoping that we can kind of look at how we do that. And as Leo mentioned, I'm sure we can get many volunteers who got blue paint, little pieces of tape, little hearts, peace signs, whatever it is. So I wanted to thank you again for that. But also, I'm wondering about future meetings. And I know that there's regulations, Brown Act and such that require us to be in person. And I think it's important to be in person. But I also think that there are people who are not able to be here because they either live too far and can't make that journey. They may have children that they don't want to have crying and screaming and running around here. And so I wonder if there is a way to have a, whether it's Zoom or whether it's call-in, so that people that aren't able to be here still have the opportunity to participate. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Sue Taylor. I have like three topics, so I'm just going to go real fast. I wasn't here for the adoption of the agenda. And Friends of Historic Hangtown had asked that 12.2 be continued to a future date since to give the time to, I think that whole item was supposed to be advertised with a workshop before it came back to the city council, which hasn't happened. And also, we're still in litigation with the city with that item, so we can't even speak to it. So I know our lawyer sent you a letter, and I'm hoping that you received that. It was last night because this was all last minute, and hoping that you can consider, as you promised in the past, that we could have a workshop and time to advertise and then have a debate. So I can talk about the fast food restaurant lawsuit that was had. And because the city argued that the development guide is just a recommendation, the judge took that to heart and ruled that the courts give accord great deference to the agency's determination. So what the judge said was, according since neither the general plan nor the zoning ordinance preclude fast food restaurants within the CBD, the zoning matrix attached as appendix D to the development guide, which does not have the force of law, cannot be used to legally preclude approval of a fast food restaurant in the CBD. If it is the city or community's desire to have a blanket prohibition on fast food restaurants in the CBD zone, a legislative fix is required. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. I don't know if you read the court hearing. So basically, he's saying if you want the land use in zoning district, actually, this matrix that you use in your development guide means nothing. And if you want it to mean something, you need to either put it in the general plan or the zoning ordinance. And as far as CBD, it'd be really easy to fix that with a note that you said after eating and drinking establishment to put excluding fast food restaurants. That's what was done for the historic plan commercial and the commercial zone. Otherwise, fast food restaurants are allowed by right in these areas, as the judge has concluded, which has really opened the door for those McDonald's, Taco Bells, and all those things that you say are fear mongering, but it's really now allowed. So and then my other thing is, I want to thank the city for allowing us to have Hangtown Wagon Train Days. It was touch and go up until the day before whether we could still participate. But otherwise, I do appreciate the help that I got from Terry and Recreation and Public Works was pretty great. So on that note, it was a pretty successful event. Everybody that attended said it was a lot of fun. We were surprised that we did get hit with a $1,000 city fee. And when we listened to your decision to put that fee on the events, I think it was suggested that events that are like community service would get some kind of waiver, and we were denied that waiver. So we're kind of curious of who decides that denial. And the reason I'm bringing this up is we're also, my husband and I sponsored the Christmas parade, and we've been asking whether we can have a waiver for that. And I'm going to plead for that again because that event is for the residents of Placerville. It's the, we raise money that goes to Toys for Tots. All the money that's raised goes to buy merchandise in the stores in Placerville. And the gifts that we receive are distributed to the children in Placerville. And tagging a $1,000 fee on this is really a hardship. So I would ask that the city give us an answer on that so we can prepare. And I would hope that you would, I guess we only get a waiver of $500, but I would actually ask if you could give the full thousand because of the contribution this event is to the city. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi. Hello, how are you guys?
Good evening.
Good. Um, it's kind of like nerve wracking being in front of you guys, but I feel like once I, if I close my eyes, it'll sound just like the Zoom. Okay, so my name is Elizabeth DeBeau. I'm not going to go over my whole spiel, but I do also want to echo what Ruth and what Michelle Green and what Leo have said with the proclamation. I do think that that is a perfect way for us to progress and move forward into the future with the diverse community that we already have and that is consistently growing. What I do want to talk about, just one item, is the continual and the status of the nooses that you are going to remove, that you do have authorization to remove within District 3. The one in particular is at Eldorado High School, on the school bowl board, the Eldorado High School football field, on the sponsorship billboard, there is a City of Placerville Parks and Rec sponsorship banner. And there is a noose hanging in the background, super, super small, I can't really see it. But now that everyone is aware that this is what we're going to do to move forward, I would highly appreciate that be looked at and, or not necessarily investigated, but at least looked at. You can form a budget to either replace it, or you can put a little sticker over it, whatever works. But I do know that, like I said before, the community is getting more diversity. And this upcoming school year, there's going to be more children that are going to go there. And I would like all of them to feel welcome and to understand why possible is so beautiful for all of us. So if we can get that as an action item for maybe one of the next upcoming meetings, I would appreciate it. And that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
All right, seeing nobody else approach the podium, we will go ahead and bring it back to the council. Sue Taylor, I'd recommend you, it sounds like most of your questions could be answered by chatting with Terry Zeller at the Parks Department, and he should be able to work with you. And we'll take a look at the football field and see what that is. I know Cleve, yes.
I just want to mention, though, those logos you've mentioned, we are working as hard as we can to get those replaced. The football field, when we are aware of that one takes a little bit more to actually, because of the way it is built. Terry Zeller is working on those. Unfortunately, he's, his staff has been cut in half the last couple of weeks, but we are getting him some help. And we are working on getting them replaced just as quickly as we can. So we are working, we're aware of all of those. You're seeing it out there, and we're working on them. So thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
I'd just like to mention, too, that Nick was able to supply a staff person today, and I think we knocked about 100 of them out today.
All right, that's good. Thank you for that update. All right, moving on, we have Consent Calendar, number seven now. And all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of all resolutions will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise.
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar.
All right. All right, we got a first and a second. We're going to go ahead and open up the consent calendar for public comment. Anybody wishing to comment on the consent calendar, please step up to the podium. All right, seeing nobody approaching the podium, we'll go ahead and close the consent calendar, bring it back for any further discussion or a, yes.
I'd just like to call attention to the fact that we are going to have the fireworks display at the fairgrounds this year. I think a lot of people might be interested to hear that. It's something that we've had, you know, every year, and people look forward to it. And we have the letter from the Fire Department assuring us that it's okay. So I think it's a real important thing for our city, and thank you.
It's definitely a risk worth taking, especially this year. So looking forward to that. With that said, if we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye. All right, thank you very much. Moving on to item nine, there were no items pulled from the consent calendar. Number 10, we have no ordinances. So we're moving on to number 11, 11.1, adopt a resolution adopting Eldorado disposal rates for collection of solid waste and recycling within the City of Placerville franchise area. This is going to go to Mr. Rivas.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. In July of 2009, the council adopted an ordinance basically regarding mandatory garbage service. Rates were set at that time based on the mandatory service. Included in the ordinance is a inflator provision that allows for rate increases based on the Consumer Price Index and the Producer Price Index for number two diesel fuel and the county surcharge. Staff does meet with Eldorado Disposal monthly to review the two indices and determine the amount of the increase, if any. The rate increase for 2021 is based on two factors, and that would be the Consumer Price Index or CPI for California and the Producer Price Index, PPI for number two diesel fuel. Attached to your staff report are the data sheets showing the calculation for these two indexes. The CPI increase is 1.66%, and the fuel adjustment is 0.34% for a total net adjustment for 2021 of 2.007%. The CPI and PPI rate adjustments are only applied to the current base rate, meaning that the materials recovery rebuild project costs share amount in the amount of 3.23% that the council approved, I believe that was last September, and the county surcharge of 2.46% are removed, and then it's applied to just the base rate. This increase would equate, for example, of a 50 cent increase per month for the 35-gallon residential cart size customer. Also attached to this report is a resolution that would adopt the new rates that would be effective July 1 of 2021. And the resolution includes Exhibit A, which outlines all the rates for all customers, residential and commercial. So staff is recommending that the council adopt the resolution, adopting the rates for the collection of solid waste and recycling within the City of Placerville franchise area. And with that, I'm going to turn the remainder of the portion of this staff report to the Eldorado Disposal staff, who are here to provide the council with a PowerPoint presentation. And they will outline their services, summarize their performance standards, the recycling efforts, and the three container cart system, and the upgrade, and an update to the upgrade of the materials recovery facility known as the MRF. Thank you. And with that, I'll turn it over to, looks like we have Jeff England to give the presentation. Jeff, it's all yours.
Thank you, Pierre. Much appreciated. I am Jeff England, a site manager, Eldorado Disposal. I've got several members of our team here to help if we get too into the weeds or anything like that tonight. I very much appreciate the opportunity to address the council tonight. So brief presentation to work through stuff. Pierre, you hit the highlights as far as the rate components. I appreciate that. Thank you. What I'd like to begin with tonight is, if you'll notice, those have noticed for a while, my belief is that when you want to put something, when you want to put the past in your rearview mirror and keep it there, you need a strong vision for the future. And for us, a good way to reflect that is with a new logo. And so we developed a new logo this year. I think it better reflects Placerville and Eldorado County. And that's how I'd like to kick off our presentation tonight. You'll be seeing that on the sides of our garbage trucks and banners and different things. And so that's what I wanted to kick off our presentation tonight. And since I've got the job of moving this forward, there we go. So I, darn it, I know that's a little hard to see, but what I want to speak to as we put last year into our rearview mirror, it's still appropriate that we reflect on what we had happen last year. And what I'd like to speak to with regard to the pandemic is this. Each of us had the rather unique experience of having to assess or self-assess whether we were essential last spring. And we came out on the essential side very clearly. And it was very interesting and one of the wildest experiences I've had at work. What I'd like to speak to is first, is that what we did at Eldorado Disposal to keep our employees and the community safe is that my operations manager, Ross, is here tonight, and that we made a point of going to 3:30 a.m. drivers' meetings very early on and saying very explicitly to our drivers, we do not care if you think it's fake noose or a hoax. We will mask, and we will save distance, and we will be that way out in public and everywhere we go. And to that, we had minimal number of positives with the COVID last year with our employee group, and we had no one who was infected by somebody from within the employee group. And I don't believe that happened accidentally. I think that had everything to do with the work of our frontline people to ensure that that happened. And I also need to speak to the fact that that was a very interesting time in that it was also rather daunting for many of our drivers who had real trepidation about going out there and picking up people's trash at that time. And so I've never been prouder of our group, whether it was our drivers who were out there on the street picking up people's stuff, or our customer service reps who were suddenly confronted with having to work from home, and the our IT people stepping up to enable that, and the things that we were able to do to continue service during that time. And one of the blessings that came out of that experience last year is when people were sheltering in place, they got to see us work like they hadn't seen us before. And we had some really cool things happen, especially with kids. Kids who were home and bored to tears, and their parents figuring out how the heck to keep them moving and doing their education and stuff, found that our truck coming by on a weekly basis was a big moment for their kids. And so we started getting reports from our drivers, which is, hey, I have this kid that comes out and waves to me, and they're all excited when we show up. And so do you still have any of those, you know, plastic garbage trucks that we used to have that I could do? And so I was like, well, that was interesting. And then we started getting messages from parents who said, who talked about what a highlight it was each week for the truck to come by and their kids to get all excited. And so we had stuff like that happen, where people actually put together sanitary kits for our drivers and little notes and cards out there to thank them. And I have to tell you, that was emotionally gratifying for us and our drivers at that time when, you know, it was, it was pretty squirrely then to go out and do our jobs. And so we just, and so what we, what our drivers in this told us is, we need to put together some kid kits, and we put little packages together. And so we did recycle crayons, crayon books, and hats, and different stuff like that. And we really turned, you know, that situation into a positive and made some really cool friends out there. We had a couple of parents call and ask us to help with birthday parties. And I'm going to tell you, Chuck E. Cheese has nothing on a garbage truck showing up at your six-year-old's birthday party and showing all the kids how a garbage truck works. It was really cool. So, you know, back to the work stuff. One of the great things that has come out of the last couple of years is this shift that we need to make to get to, especially with regard to organics. And so one of the great things that's happened in through most of the county is getting out of plastic bags and getting into paper bags. And we have some work to do here with regard to organics. But green waste in plastic bags is trash. It can't be composted. The people who we take it to no longer consider it recyclable material. They don't go through the trouble to pull the material out of the plastic bags. And so if we want our green waste to be composted and diverted, then it needs to be in paper bags. And a lot of people in the county have stepped up and made that adjustment there. And I wanted to share that tonight. One of the most daunting tasks, and I have to thank Pierre especially, for the teamwork that we've done with our sustainability coordinators, especially in this area right here, the restaurants in particular. So Assembly Bill 1826 specifically mandates that restaurants and commercial enterprises, the prior mandate was if they do four yards of trash on a weekly basis, and they generate organic material, they had to have a food waste program. This year, that mandate has dropped to two yards a week customers, which means virtually every commercial enterprise in the county is subject to a review and an assessment as to whether or not they have to have a food waste or organics program. And so we are working our way through that right now. And, you know, as you can imagine, all the number of restaurants and everybody, and especially with what happened last year, can't imagine a more daunting task than to have to approach these people and say with everything. to approach these people and say, "With everything you have going on, the state says you have to do this." But here's what I want to share, the way that people have stepped up in Placerville and Eldorado County. The city of Placerville, and Eldorado County, and the city of Elk Grove have the three highest compliance rates, over 75% of any jurisdictions within the greater Sacramento region, and that is per CalRecycle, who Pierre and Cleve and Eldorado disposal work very hard to stay in the good graces of. And so, that is not a minor achievement. It has everything to do with our sustainability people, and our operations people, and the teamwork that we get from Pierre in particular, going out to the restaurants and explaining to them, "This is important, the state says we have to do it, let's try to embrace it and take it on as positively as possible, even though it's an added expense," and everything that, and work and everything that goes with it. So, in our area, the reason we have this picture up is that Eldorado disposal and Rayleigh's are the two entities, the two vendors who are allowed to bring our commercial food waste to the University of California Davis Biodegester, a very high-tech, very experimental, very expensive system that has been developed to try to figure out what's the best way to deal with material, and because we put an emphasis very early on getting the right feedstock out of the restaurants here, which is to mean, what we really want is prep stuff, not off the plate, and we get such good, clean material. We and Rayleigh's are the only two that get to take our material to the UC Davis Bi-Gester, and they really like our material. So, I really want to take my hat off to everybody that's been associated with that, because it's very much a teamwork thing, and while it's been a really hard thing to ask restaurants in particular to do, especially over the last year, they've stepped up, they've complied, and they've kept us out of CalRecycle hot water, and that matters. It matters. Yeah, here's to you. So, what else does the state have in mind? Well, Senate Bill 1383, I need to warn you about that. It's, this is, this is a vast and complex set of legislation that is coming our way, but I will hone down a couple of the more important components that are really going to be most impactful here. The number one biggest thing related to Senate Bill 1383 is that it mandates a residential home organics program, which means that residents need to be able to take their food waste and put it into their green waste cart, and then we pick it up and figure out how to get it composted and diverted. And that is coming next year. So what that means is, next year, so a couple of things that that means. One is, we're going to start running the pilot programs in Eldorado County. There will be one here in Placerville, we look to implement in September. We'll be teamworking with Pierre, we'll be teamworking with the Neighborhood Association, we're looking at the Duck Streets up in the north area right now as far as routing and stuff goes, but that is something that we'll be running as a pilot program, and that will keep us in the good graces of CalRecycle. Senate Bill 1383 fully implements next year. What we are looking to do is implement these pilot programs around the county, beginning about September, and then running them through, and what that will enable is, one, we understand fully what it takes operationally to execute this, we'll also understand what it takes from a costing standpoint to execute this, because this will be a rate driver next year. Now, the state says we have to have these programs in place January 1st, 2022. Our strategy is that these pilot programs will buy us time, that by having these in place, and by having a robust pilot program that also includes surveying people to find out if they're composting already, if they've got home gardens, and doing things of that nature, and what else is happening out there in residential world to enable compliance with 1383, because ultimately what the state is interested in is whether we're driving down the amount of trash on a per capita basis that relates to their diversion numbers. So, what we have to do is enable residents' ability to be able to take their food waste and put it into the green waste cart and not have to think about it again. So what that means for us is, as you know, right now, we pick up green waste on alternating weeks. We pick up trash every week, we pick up recycle one week, and green waste the next. This program will require that we pick up that green waste cart that might have food waste in it every week, and we do that because of this highly scientific technical term called the "ick factor" that comes into play when you think about green waste and food waste being combined, especially at this time of year. It's not pretty. And yet, that is the mandate, and that's what we need to do. So, we know that we will have to increase the number of trucks, increase the number of drivers, and that the expectation is, this reaches Placerville, Eldorado Hills, Cameron Park, and most of the county. Very few areas are exempt from having to be a part of this program. And what the state has demonstrated with the commercial AB 1826 is they don't care if there's a pandemic, they are relentless in pushing us to achieve these goals, and that's just the reality. So we will be implementing these pilot programs this fall, we will be learning everything that we need to know, so that we can come to you and say, "Here's what it's going to cost to execute this, here's what it's going to take, here's what we need from you to help us do this," and then meet those CalRecycle goals. And so that's what we've got coming, is specific to 1383. Now, if you guys would like any more specific information about 1383, one, you can go to the CalRecycle website, there's a lot of really good information out there, some nice summaries, but I would also be very happy to share some summaries and some other stuff that we have to better educate you folks, so that you can explain to your constituents what's coming. Because it is complex, but a few things are very relevant to the home front, and so that's what we want to do, is teamwork this by beginning to, you know, educate folks about what's coming, and that kind of starts with this tonight. So, we talked a lot the last couple of years about recycle and what's, you know, changed in the recycle industry. Our drive to reduce contamination has everything to do with outreach and education, that is something that we talked a lot about a couple of years ago here, and the importance of that. Our latest and greatest way to try to do that is we've developed what we call "oops tags," and that is when our drivers identify contamination in someone's recycle cart, we literally put that on somebody's cart, it lets them know, "Hey, can you give our office a call?" And one of our customer service reps or our sustainability coordinator will talk to you about the Styrofoam, or the something, the shrink wrap, or that thing that used to be recyclable, that isn't anymore, so that we can have that conversation and educate folks to do the right thing, which almost everybody we talked to wants to do, to get the right stuff into the recycle cart. Okay, so, I heard a conversation coming in about defensible space. So in years past, we have been able to work with Eldorado County Fire Safe councils, and the fire safe councils, who are robust throughout the county, Pat Dwyer and some other leaders in the county have really developed some nice programs there. But in years past, California has enabled grant money to facilitate these programs, and this year, what occurred was CalFire diverted money that had been going towards fire prevention to firefighting, and we can appreciate, you know, why they felt like they needed to do that. But, all of a sudden, these, up to like 30 programs, 30 roll-off boxes a year that we were able to do through this grant program, that money went away, but the need clearly is greater than ever. So what we've done at Eldorado disposal is developed a program ourselves, and what we've said is, what we're going to do is reach out to existing fire safe councils, HOAs, road associations, you know, organized groups, and say, "We can provide you a roll-off box." And what we're doing is, we're putting it at the Eldorado County A-rate, it's universal pricing that way, it's at the lowest cost relative to a lot of the outlying areas, especially here, we're putting a 25% discount on it, and we've developed a contract that basically enables a group activity along those lines. And so what folks can do, if they've got, especially if they're organized, like an HOA or something, is call 626-4141, especially if you ask Monica, our customer service supervisor, who's a total ace, and she will get somebody on the right path to being able to teamwork one of these roll-off boxes, so that a neighborhood can band together and combine, you know, paying for that box and defensible space their areas. And so, we've done one with, for the Oma Ranch Fire Safe Council, we have another one coming up for Auburn Lakes Trails, we are going to be getting the word out through the biannual newsletter that we do through the Mountain Democrat very soon, and more information in the Mountain Demo coming out, and so I wanted to share that tonight, especially when I heard that, you know, this is obviously a hot topic. And so, this is what we're trying to do to enable defensible space, and even in Placerville, and it isn't just Pilot Hill or one of those types of areas, you know, any neighborhood can get their, can pull together and get a roll-off box dropped in their cul-de-sac at the end of their road, and pull together, you know, their resources and get their own defensible space activities to occur, and utilize one of these boxes. So this is a new program that we've come up with this year to try to meet this need. Boom, we're at the MRF. So, the transfer station. So what I'm really happy to report is that our lime remediation has satisfied the state, satisfied the county environmental department, $5 million, and three years later, we've got the damn lime out from under the ground. And that means we can construct, say, Hosannas. And so, where we are now is, if you see that building in the upper right-hand corner, that is under construction now. We have the padboard, we have the interior push walls going up right now, and we are on the path to having that building, which is where trash will go, and both commercial and residential customers will take their material to, and we expect to have that building operational by November. If you'll see on the right side there, that kind of white, that's a truck, and it's sitting on a scales. We installed those scales early this year specifically so that we could divert commercial truck traffic to the right and onto those scales, even before the building's ready, and that is so that we can begin the process of what is going to be wonderful for people who use the MRF, which is to separate the public line and the commercial truck line, and get people through the MRF line faster. So, that's also in motion, we expect to have the scale, it's getting operational, and we've got some things to do to get the road ready to be able to do that, but that's very much in motion right now also. So, boy, I couldn't read that if my life depended on it from here. But Pierre, Pierre alluded to the rate changes, I know that you have that in front of you. What I'd like to hit on is the fact that even though it was not memorialized, we heard you last year, we deleted the MRF and the county surcharge components from the CPI piece of it, so that they are not part of that acceleration, they are entities unto themselves. And so, that is part of how we're able to, you know, maintain a rate change this year that is specific to the Consumer Price Index and the fuel surcharge, which keeps the overall rate at just about 2% this year. And if you have any questions about that, I'm happy to ask, and my ACE controller is also here if we want to get too weedy on that. So, the other thing I like to reference every year is our community partnerships, and this is, this might be my favorite one of all the stuff that we've done, frankly. This is a team working with the Eldorado County Animal Shelter and the Clipper, we're running this at least once a month. That guy is Brady, and he still needs a home. And he, and so, I share this because what I like to take the opportunity to do, and it isn't just about tooting our own horn, is that our community involvement is something that we not only, you know, take to heart, but we want to encourage anyone that we can to be actively participatory in. There are so many cool opportunities and meaningful things to do, even right here in Placerville. An example that I will share is Hands for Hope. Hands for Hope is a phenomenal organization, very kid-oriented, the kids identify a need, they develop the program, and they execute it themselves. It's a program I've been a supporter of for a long time down the hill. It's migrated up to Placerville, if you didn't know, and it's working very well through Eldorado High School, and will be through Markham this next year. They did, are doing, I shouldn't say "did," they are doing a food closet in Placerville that was very helpful during the pandemic and continues to support families in need with food items. And so these are just two examples of where we take our community partnerships to heart, we encourage other folks to join with us, and that's really what I wanted to conclude with tonight, and to thank you for our good partnership, as we navigate these remarkable changes that are coming in what used to be a simple trash industry. And I'm happy to take any questions that you folks might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Jeff, for your thorough report. As always, you're doing a lot more than just picking up trash, it seems like, so, it looks like we've got a lot coming down the pipeline. I'm going to ask our council members if they have any questions for you. Okay.
I don't have any questions, I'd just like to thank you for all the work that you do in the community, and I'm glad to see the vegetation management bins, I think that's a great addition, and something that's very needed. I've got to say, seeing those pictures of kids getting all excited, as a parent that was home with kids all last year, I had kind of mixed feelings about it, it kind of, it reminded me how deprived they were, but I'm really glad that it brought joy to your drivers, and that it was good for somebody.
Thank you. No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, please encourage folks to contact us about the defensible space program. If you get inquiries about what to do, you know, or especially if somebody gets a citation or something along those lines, that's why we developed that program.
Yeah, so just, just thank you all around, and also thank you for keeping the cost of the MRF out of the CPI adjustments.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you for the presentation. One question I had, and I kind of know the answer to this, but I thought it would be good for the public to know, and so, this regards to SB 1383. How are you going to measure compliance with that? So like, say you have home composters or other people, how do you measure the diversion on that? And I think there's also, because not only do you get dinged, I believe the municipalities also get dinged if we're not hitting those compliance numbers. So, wanted to just get that information out there as well.
Yeah, no, great question, Mike, appreciate it. So, please know that Cleve and Pierre are very much on the hook, along with us, with CalRecycle, to achieve these goals. We, in fact, we've got a conference call coming in the next week or two for an update on where we are with AB 1826. And so, first, I guess the best way to start is to say that what the state ultimately is going to grade us on is the amount of trash per capita. What the state measures diversion based on now is the amount of trash that is being processed in the county relative to the number of people who are here. So in theory, the participation rate isn't that relevant, but, because ultimately that's the number that they're going to look at. But I believe that it's relevant, and I very much believe that it's going to be important for us to identify that. And so when we run our pilot programs, and then when we go full-blown, we will do surveys, because we want to understand how many people are composting at home, how many people have their own gardens, and then get that information to CalRecycle, so that they understand, because here's the thing, Eldorado County is a different animal. A lot of this state program, and what I described about how 1383, 1383 works, is graded in urban environments. It's a different animal out here, but the state is basically saying, "We don't care if you're San Francisco, or we don't care if you're Eldorado County, you're going to have a program." And so, the fundamentals of it, which is that a green waste cart can have food waste dumped into it, and that we're going to pick it up every week, is consistent with how a lot of jurisdictions operate, but whether or not that's successful, or after people take one smell of, you know, what that is like after a week in August, and say, "Ooh, I'm not doing this anymore," it's important and it isn't. And so, what the state's going to care about, again, is that amount of trash volume relative to the number of people that are here, and that's going to tell them whether or not they've driven down the amount of trash that's going to landfill. But for us to execute this properly, we could take a half-assed approach and say, "Okay, we're going to throw people a plastic cart and put it in their kitchen, oh great, we got to pick up everybody's green waste every week now, which is what this is going to take," and leave it at that, and say- take, um, and, and leave it at that. And say, well, we've fulfilled our obligation. But I think that in Eldorado County, the bigger picture is that we need to work with people like the master gardeners. We need to be able to do what we've done before and go to schools and say, and encourage community gardens and teach kids how to recycle and compost. One of the things that we learn, if we, you take stuff to kids, they take it home. And composting, i- in particular, and organics recycling is very much that way, just like getting a recycled material out of the trashes. And so we also look to do these other programs that may, that may be rather auxiliary, but I think that they're important. And I think they really speak to what's important for Eldorado County and what gives us an opportunity to get trash uh, out of the landfills by getting that food waste that's recyclable and compostable and either getting it into somebody's garden or somebody's community garden, happy to talk to you about that, city Placerville folks, and figure out ways, creative ways to make this, meet this 1383 mandate without just doing it at the bare minimum. And so I hope that answers your question, Mike. That's, that's kind of what I'm shooting for.
No, it does. I just um, maybe get some more clarification of two things. Um, was, is rulemaking already done at Cal Recycle? In other words, or is everything already laid out from 1383 and then second? So are we having to divert, like, say, I'm just throwing a number, we're at 40% today and by, you know, 2025, we have to be at 62%. I'm just wondering so if the public can know, like, we're at this number today, but we have to be at this number tomorrow regardless of how we, you know, get there, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, well, no, you're in the ballpark. Uh, we're, gosh, I don't remember right off the top. You're in the low 40s, uh, I think here in Placerville, specific to diversion rate. Um, the state goal is still 75%. I do not believe they've deviated from that. Uh, they do understand that that's not a, a realistic goal, especially relative to China Sword and what occurred in the recycle markets over the last few years. Uh, but uh, to answer your, your question, um, I haven't seen flexibility from Cal Recycle with regard to implementing uh, the rules as they stand now. Uh, I don't expect uh, that they will if, uh, for crying out loud, they've held firm on uh, commercial uh, organics goals during a pandemic. Uh, I don't think they're gonna back off on 1383 either. So I think it's here and we need to plan for it and deal with it.
Thank you.
But you, you, you provided a lot of information. I want to thank you for that. I, I looked through my notes here. Um, we've got so many things to talk about and to, to share with our community. Hopefully there's plenty of people watching this and see what's going on here because it is coming down the pipe. And this is another one of those unfunded mandates that our state is so good at. And uh, and they're, they're putting it on us. They're putting it on, on you guys. And of course, you pass it down to us because you make money and we, I guess, pay you.
Yeah, we just had an interesting conversation with the, the county. We had rather the same conversation uh, today. And I had to bring up the M-word, uh, which is mandatory service uh, for the county, which they've been loathe to address. But I think this is the push-to-shove uh, that's gonna happen for them uh, on that front. Um, I think the, the state is basically saying you're gonna have to. And so there are a lot of uncomfortable things that are gonna have to be addressed realistically. Uh, and one of those is gonna be a rate conversation next year to providing weekly service and uh, the way that we have to deal with this material. We do have an agreement uh, to be able to have the material composted, windrode and composted uh, at a facility in Yolo County. Um, it costs over double what it presently costs us right now to process green waste. Uh, and again, running another, you know, truck every week and driver and all those things are, are, you know, not gonna be pretty from a costing standpoint. But that's why important that we have this conversation right now so that everybody knows what's coming and that the pilot programs will help us clarify exactly what our ask is going to be going forward.
Thank you. Do you know what the cost is? That 25% discount uh, off of the, I guess you said the A-rate for a, a neighborhood who wants to get a roll-off? Do you know what that cost is?
Gosh, um, 40-yarder? Help me out here. Four, 450, 400 bucks, something like that?
$75 discount.
Yeah, it, it's, it's probably around 75 or so off of a 30 or 40-yard uh, roll-off box, something along those lines.
So somewhere around 350, 375, around that range.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I should know that off the top, sorry.
That's all right. It's just a ballpark. Give, give some people an idea of what they could expect if they were to consider.
Yeah, and again, 626, 4141. We're more than happy to get people on the path to that program.
Well, I, I want to thank you very much for your, uh, your, your presentation and actually bringing so much of your staff here to uh, to make sure we have everything covered. I wouldn't touch much on the rate increase, but uh, like every year, it's here and it's expected and it's, you know, you've done a great job of explaining why you're doing it and the cost associated with it. And so I appreciate you taking that effort to, to educate our, you know, what we're, what we need to look at. And uh, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I'm gonna open it up to public comment if there's any questions uh, that anybody has or would like to make any statements. Uh, now would be a great time to uh, approach the podium, please. All right, seeing nobody approaching the podium for public comments. Uh, again, I want to thank you and your staff for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So we're gonna bring it back to a, to the council for a, um, for a motion, please.
I'd like to move that we adopt the resolution and rates as proposed.
I'll second.
All right, first and second, a roll call, please.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye. Thank you.
Almost like a protest vote on that. Okay, item number 11.2, uh, adopt a resolution establishing the appropriation limit or the GAN limit for fiscal year 2020, 2021 and determining the, the compliance with Government Code Section 7910.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's great to meet with you again tonight. So this is a routine item that you take action on each year. Um, as you mentioned, section 7910 of the state government code requires each local government agency to establish an appropriations or GAN limit by resolution each year. And the city is required to adjust its GAN limit by both the prior-year per capita personal income increment and prior-year change in population. The change in per capita person, personal income was 3.73% and the change in population that year was 1.33%. Based on these factors, the fiscal year 2021 GAN limit is calculated to be $25,506,934. The general fund proceed revenue subject to the GAN limit is $7,588,830 or $17,918, $104 of unused appropriation limit. So uh, below the actual limit. So once again, Placerville is well within its GAN limit. And with that, I would uh, be happy to answer any questions.
This, this particular issue always seems to have a slight giggle factor to it, that we would ever consider hitting that number. But I guess we gotta go through this process anyway, don't we?
You have plenty of capacity.
Yes.
We can dream, huh?
We could make more money now. Um, uh, any, any questions or comments?
No, I would just, I comment. It's funny that we do this every year and yet um, the state sort of uh, finesses this to uh, get around said GAN limits. So anyways, that's a whole other story.
Thank you. All right, I'd open this item up for a public comment. All right, seeing nobody approaching the podium, podium, we'll bring it back for the council for a motion and a, and a vote.
I'll move the item.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye. Thank you very much, Ms. O'Connell. All right, next on the agenda, roll call, please. We're holding a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the adoption, adopting the proposed fiscal year 2021, 2022 operating budget and capital improvement program budget as presented. I, I would like to first uh, express my appreciation for our staff for all the hard work that went into this. And um, and uh, this is the last uh, meeting and vote on this one until next spring again, or actually till fall when we do a, a second look at it. So I'll turn this over to Mr. Warren, yeah, for further discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. And yes, this is about the third time you've seen this information, so I'll keep my comments brief. But uh, over the past six months, your budget team, which is comprised of all department heads and the city manager, has collectively developed both the operating budget and capital improvement program budget in a manner that aligns with the city council's established fiscal policies and maintains essential program delivery to the greatest extent possible. As part of the budget development process, the council did hold two workshops on May 6th and May 20th of this year. An initial open hearing was held on June 8th. Uh, we had two Measure HL Sales Tax Committee meetings, uh, which were held on April 5th and June 7th. And we discussed potential street sewer system and water system projects that should be constructed over the next year. The proposed CIP budget includes new street sewer water projects recommended by the committee. Both the proposed operating budget and CIP budget uh, include essentially the same expenditure assumptions as what was discussed at the initial budget workshop on June 8th, except we did include the $5,000 contribution to the Placerville Fire Safe Council per your direction. The proposed operating budget is balanced, totals 21, 21,225,803, of which $9,769,638 is general fund uses. Um, the proposed operating budget reflects about a $1.1 million or 5.56% increase. And that 5.5% increase is primarily due to restoration of the various services that were foregone during the pandemic. Um, the proposed CIP budget totals 3.1 million and includes 36 projects from upgrading our city building permit software to repaving Middletown Road. Um, overall, the budget includes 14 new paving projects, many of which are neighborhood roads. The budget is a living document that can be revised anytime by the council. And staff plans on returning to the city council at mid-year, uh, and consider funding for an additional police officer position, a police services assistant, an additional administrative secretary position in the Department of Development Services, log rolling aquatics features. We'll try to chase out for donations for that. Um, and either an administrative analyst position in the administration department or assistant finance director position. I would like to publicly thank the budget team, the city council for once again, working together to balance this year's budget, which is a responsible plan for operating the city over the next 12 months and an investment in the future. I would also like to thank your city treasurer, accountant Candace Bernardi for her stellar work on preparing this year's budget. Uh, with that said, I respectfully request the city council to approve the proposed fiscal year 21, 22 operating budget and CIP budget as presented. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warren. And I'll bring it back for any questions.
I don't have any. I've seen this document at this point many times.
We have looked at this document many, many times over the last few, several months.
I just wish that more people could come and see us in action. People just do not realize what everybody goes through. Staff and, and us included in, you know, banding this about and trying to make the right decisions and, you know, it's, it's, it can be really difficult, you know, to have to say no to one thing and, you know, especially when we know we, how much we need it and we have to say no. That's the worst part, I think. Anyway, Dave, you did a great job again. And I thank you.
Thank you. It was all teamwork.
Yeah, to put a number on that, we had somewhere between $2 and $3 million worth of requests that we said no to.
Right.
That were, each department came up with their list of needs and, you know, maybe a little bit of wants, but mostly needs that, that really, most of them were really things they needed to do their job on a daily basis and, and to operate. And, and we just, you know, the staff did a great job of picking and negotiating between each other and figuring out who's gonna give up what to help another department out and work with each other to, to develop a proposed budget under Cleve's leadership and negotiating tactics. Um, I truly appreciate that, the give and take that we have because we have to find, we have to find that place where we get to a balanced budget every year. And uh, and we, you know, we, we were fortunate to have a few extra dollars left over for, that, that sales tax came in that was unexpected. It helped cushion the blow ever so slightly, but it didn't take a big dent out of that $2 million. And so, um, so there, you know, we're still operating on a slim budget. We're still have reduced staffing. We are still um, don't have all the computers and programs that we need to, to work as efficiently as we could. And our staff is making do with it and doing an incredible job uh, at it too. So I just want to express my appreciation for that. And looking out in the audience, I think I'm speaking to the choir for the most part here, but uh, I'm sure, hopefully somebody is listening at home on, on YouTube or somewhere out there that hears this and understands what a, what an amazing group of people we have working for, for us, for, for us, for, for the residents of this town. They don't work for anybody else. They work for us. And, and our tax dollars and our sales tax dollars are spent in this town help fund this city. And uh, and so with that, on behalf of the city, I want to express my appreciation for our staff and what they do here.
Along those lines, I'd like to say that it's very unfortunate that the folks that left, left. That they're some of the ones that request money and everything. And I think they need to hear this.
Yeah.
You know, why we're not always able to, you know.
Mm-hmm. Agreed. So with that, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna open it up for a public comment at this time.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, I just am so grateful for the appropriation that you made for the Placerville Fire Safe Council and hearing what all the other department heads and the sacrifices that have been made. Uh, you know, $5,000, you know, it's not a very big part of your overall budget, but it's going to make a big impact for the Fire Safe Council. Um, and uh, I'm sorry that I don't have more detail to share with you right now, but I can tell you that uh, our initial thoughts on spending the money are for a demonstration project for chipping defensible space. Uh, you know, we've heard a lot about that tonight, so I'll just, I'll leave it at that, defensible space, uh, perhaps working with our own Eldorado disposal services to leverage this money a little bit more uh, for uh, low-cost dumpsters and so, so on. Um, so demonstration for defensible space. The other thing that came to mind was to leverage these funds to get, uh, to show a match for grant from another organization. Uh, they always like to see that we've got a different uh, source of money. And so I think that will um, help us win or could help us win some uh, grants to do even more work around our town. And the uh, last thing that we will plan to do is enhance our outreach. We, if we have a chipping program, we have to let everybody know about it. So we'll have to get um, our website up and running so people can register. Uh, we can coordinate and uh, make the best use of these funds. Thank you very much for your generosity and uh, look forward to giving you a positive report later in the year. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chris.
Sue Rodman, Major H Committee, Major L, Major H and L Committee, and also on the Fire Safe Council. Um, I think that the budget is the best that can possibly be done. I think you guys really did an awesome job here. I would like to see you readjust those federal one-time funds that are in there to increase funding for veg management. There's some funding for veg management, but I'd like to see that increased in some of the other things. We've done without the log rolling for a long time. We could put that into veg management with better, better return on our investment, I think. And if somebody really wants the log rolling, let them fund it. Um, but thank you very much for keeping our city on a balanced budget so we're not going broke like Stockton did a couple of years ago and other communities have had to go bankrupt. I'm grateful that we haven't had to do that and that we've worked really hard. And I hope that all the public appreciates that it isn't hard. It's, it's difficult to balance a budget. Um, it's difficult for me to balance my budget. So for a whole city, I think you've done a great job. So thank you. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Sue.
Good evening again. Two things. I know he said, Dave said, that there's money in it for neighborhood roads. I'm wanting to know what kind of a program the city has for potholes, because they get worse and worse on the neighborhood streets every single day. You have to dodge them as you go around. I mean, I know you can report them, but I want to know about a program. And the second thing is, I appreciate what the Fire Safe Council is doing. I don't really understand how it's formed. Is it a nonprofit? Is it a committee of the city? Is it? And I was very surprised at the last minute that a former council member comes in and requests $5,000, and everybody says yes. It's a wonderful program. We need the Fire Safe Council, we need defensible space. But I am just concerned about how this came about. And I would think, so I don't understand how the committee's formed and where the money goes and what the accountability is and anything about it, because it just kind of came out of the blue from the city. And so it's like a grant, but you haven't advertised for grants, applications for other organizations or other city committees. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy.
All right, seeing no further people approaching the podium, we are going to close public comment and bring it back to the, to the council here for further discussion. Who would be the best person to explain the fire council?
Probably Chris.
Probably Chris, but my best to describe is they are a nonprofit, completely separate from the city. We have no, we don't appoint members or anything like that. They govern themselves and they have volunteers and set up their own board. We do have Councilmember Barelli, who we've appointed as a liaison to the committee that attends and keeps us abreast of what they are doing, but in terms of that, they, they do not, we don't have any control over them essentially. We will ask them, and we've already begun the discussions about how the money will be spent and that accountability back to the city and in terms of how that was spent. So.
Thank you. I do know at the time that we made the decision to provide that money, that my comment was we need to have some skin in the game. And this is one of those things that, you know, $5,000 is not necessarily skin, it's what I'd call a good start. And it's an issue that is very, can have very profound impact on our community and in a very bad way. And so I, I did support that, and I think that we need to continue finding ways to support that and finding grant monies and things to help support our community in this endeavor. So thank you.
Dennis, and I would like to say, too, that the Fire Safe Council is really working hard to try to raise a lot of their own funds, too. It's not that they're, you know, trying to just have us and that would satisfy their need, because they need a lot more than $5,000.
Yeah. All right. Any further comments on the, on the budget item here? Or the budget, not just the item?
Could I just clarify for Sue Rodman's question about veg management? There are other fund, funding sources other than the general fund that we're looking at for vegetation management grants and things like that, so.
And we, no, I don't know what our response rate is for potholes when they're reported on the three-point, on the 3-1-1. Is it 3-1-1? No, what is it? We have an app.
Yeah, 3-1-1.
3-1-1 app.
Yeah.
Do you have an idea? I mean, Nick, can you?
We actually, yes, Mayor. It was probably about a year ago, we did a report on number of calls that came in, our response time, and we found that our response time, just based on the calls, was usually under 24 hours. Another way that we, other than the citizen-driven complaints that we take care of them is, I've got a bag of bag patch in the back of my truck, all my guys have bags of bag patch, and if we see them, a lot of times if they're really shallow, like under an inch, it's kind of, it's not in the best interest of filling it, because it just blows out of there. So I hate to say it, but sometimes waiting a little longer till they're worse is a better strategy. But guys fill them as they see them, and we'll fill them in under 24 hours, usually like within an hour or two if somebody calls them in. So we try and keep an eye on everything wherever we're at, but we can't be in all places at all times, so we rely on the community to help us out with that sometimes.
And as a reduced staffed, how many people is on our, are in our corp yard right now?
Well, today about half of them were on vacation, so the other, the other half were dealing with a sewer spill, and then the, yeah, so.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Any further comments or statements? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to a, a vote for 2021-22 budget, or motion, actually, let's go with that.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving and adopting the proposed fiscal year '21-'22 operating budget and capital improvement program budget as presented.
I'll second.
All right, the roll call, please.
Councilmember Barelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you very much. So at this point, we're gonna take a five-minute break, and we'll be back at, what, 7:30? All right, thank you, everybody, and we are back right on time at, okay, item, let's see, item 12. Let's see. Yeah, 12.1, it reads much like another one. Adopt the resolution approving the fiscal year 2021-2022 road maintenance and rehabilitation account project list totaling $210,929, and directing staff to submit said list to the California Transportation Commission as presented. And this goes to Mr. Stone.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This proposed item before you this evening seeks approval of the 2021-2022 S21 project list. Prior to receiving an apportionment of road maintenance and rehabilitation account funds from the state comptroller, a city or county must submit to the California Transportation Commission an adopted list of projects proposed to be funded with these funds by July 1st of each year. All projects proposed to receive this funding must be adopted by resolution by the applicable city council or county board at a regular public meeting each fiscal year. This year's proposed projects include the repaving of a section of Maureen Drive, citywide street striping, asphalt patch paving in several locations throughout the city, including Bear Rock Road, Spanish Ravine, Kenneth and James. It would also include initial funding for the corp yard revitalization project, which would include road maintenance material storage improvements, road maintenance equipment storage improvements, and also road maintenance staff facility improvements. This concludes my verbal report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Nick. Appreciate that. Any questions for Nick at this time? Comments?
Just a quick comment. I've noticed that we've been starting to tap into some funding sources for the corp yard, and I'm happy to see that. You guys really need it, and so I'm glad, I'm glad that's in there.
Thank you very much.
All right, no other comments, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Kathy, would you like to comment on 12.1? I saw you left real quick. Okay, good. All right. We'll bring it back to the council for, for any further discussion or motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Yeah, a second?
A second.
All right. I will, I will second Vice Mayor Taylor's comments, and I appreciate the fact that we are getting some movement in the direction of supporting our public works up there at the corp yard. So thank you very much. Ms. O'Connell, roll call, please.
Councilmember Barelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
All right, that was the easiest one of the night. All right, moving on, item 12.2, consideration of initiating the process to amend the zoning ordinance to consider restrictions on formula businesses within the central business district, CBD zone. And I'm going to, Mr. Rivas, I see you over there. I'm gonna throw this to you. Yes?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This item was originally brought to the council back on December 10th of 2019. It's before the council today for consideration of directing staff to make amendments to the zoning ordinance pertaining to the regulation of formula businesses within the central business district, more specifically within the downtown Main Street commercial corridor. The city council may initiate amendments to the Placerville zoning ordinance by resolution of intention or by minute order. On February the 24th of 2004, there's a little bit, now I'm going back a little further, give you a little background, the city council adopted an ordinance which modified the central business district zoning regulations to further require that any formula business is subject to a conditional use permit and a site plan review prior to being established. A formula business is defined as any business with a proposed or existing exterior design, such as appearance, color, signage, that is essentially identical to five or more other businesses, other business sites using the same or similar name or identity. The purpose of requiring both a conditional use permit and a site plan review is to allow the city discretion over the business operation and the design, architecture, and materials of any proposed formula business that would seek to locate in the CBD zone district. On June 11th of 2019, by consensus, the city council directed staff to hold a discussion item with the planning commission regarding the city's current regulation of formula businesses within the CBD zone, and whether the city should consider making the allowance of formula businesses within the CBD more restrictive. In addition, staff initiated holding a workshop with the Placerville Economic Advisory Committee as well. On September 20th of 2019, the Economic Advisory Committee did hold a workshop item to discuss the current, the city's current regulation of formula businesses, to make recommendations to the city council regarding changes to the same and the zoning map. The Economic Advisory Committee members were provided a discussion outline, which is contained in Attachment 2 of Attachment 1, that being the staff report dating back to December the 10th, and a map of the current CBD zone properties, which is Attachment 3 of Attachment 1. Following discussion and public input, the Economic Advisory Committee forwarded a unanimous consensus, consensus of the five members that were present, recommending to the city council make no changes to the existing regulations of formula businesses in the CBD zone. Then on October 1st of 2019, the planning commission held a workshop to discuss the current regulations of formula business, and also to make recommendations to the council regarding changes to the same. The planning commissioners were provided a discussion outline, which is also included for you to look at, and a map of the current CBD zone as well. Following discussion and public input, the planning commission unanimously recommended that no modifications be made to the regulations. Lawsuits. On June 23rd of 2020, staff requested that the council defer any action on this item to August 2020. Upon recommendation by staff, the council continued the item off calendar pending the conclusion of a lawsuit that was filed November 13th of 2019 with a superior court by the Friends of Historic Hangtown that challenged the city's approval of sourdough and company's conditional use permit and site plan review that was approved by the city. On January 29th of 2021, now we're getting closer to the present, the superior court denied the plaintiff's petition and upheld the city's approval of the conditional use permit and the site plan review, allowing for the establishment of the sourdough and company formula business. On February 17th of 2021, a petition was filed with the superior court by the Placerville Downtown Association and the Friends of Historic Hangtown, challenging the city's approval of what's known as the Therapy Store, their conditional use permit approval and site plan review. As of the writing of the staff report, staff has been made aware that the, that a settlement agreement has been agreed upon between the petitioners and therapy stores and is expected to be executed anytime, ending the lawsuit and permitting therapy stores to open. The staff report to the council dated December 10th of 2019 is attached for reference. The staff report contains the minutes of both the planning commission and the Placerville Economic Advisory Committee. Both the planning commission and the peak made recommendations to the council that no changes are to be made to the existing regulations. Staff is recommending that the council now consider initiating a process to amend the zoning ordinance to consider restrictions on formula businesses within the central business district, and direct staff to begin a formal process, if that's the direction of the council. The council does have other options. You can receive the staff report and take no action, and you can direct staff then would be making no changes to the zoning code for additional restrictions of the formula business in the CBD zone. Or you can provide staff with further direction to amend the zoning code, and thus then you would be initiating a formal process for amending the zoning ordinance by minute order. Staff would then begin a process of workshops with the planning commission, and we would formulate changes that would eventually make their way back to the council for adoption, amending the zoning code as, as requested. So with that, that concludes staff's report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Mr. Mayor, if I might follow up on Mr. Rivas's remarks, and Pierre, I apologize to you, because I haven't had a chance to talk to you today, and I found out this afternoon that while we understood that the lawsuit had been, settlement hadn't been agreed upon in principle, I found out this afternoon that that has not been accomplished as of this time. So the lawsuit has not been settled. Apparently, the settlement discussions are still going on, but it has not been settled. So I would recommend that in our discussion, in your discussions tonight, you really not get into the merits of that lawsuit or the issues surrounding that lawsuit, because it is still pending at this time. It may very well settle, but it is still pending.
Thank you for your guidance on that, very much. All right, bring it back here for questions, for Mr. Rivas. Any questions?
No.
All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment.
A couple of small things to say. I'm not really part of any of the lawsuits, per se, but I think a corrective statement might be in order about something in Pierre's report. When sourdough was going through their lawsuit, they made the business decision to operate. Therapy Store could have also, it's a risk, but it's not because of the lawsuit that they could not operate their business. That's my understanding, so I hate to have blame laid where blame is not deserved. Also, looking at the report from 2019, I was really struck by the comments that were made by the Peak Commission, but it sounds like you wouldn't be going to Peak again if, it sounded like you said if the city council directs planning commission, I mean, a planning department to do more, they would go to the planning commission, and you didn't mention Peak. But when I read the comments that were made in 2019, what I'm struck by, and I did write you a letter and referred to this, is that I don't feel that the Peak members were really understanding what it is to be a businessperson. By the way, I'm a businessperson. I own 352 Main Street, Placerville Art Gallery. And to talk about needing consistency like having a McDonald's, what? No, we do not need a McDonald's. That would dilute what we have downtown. Predictable. Well, look, all businesses in the free market, if you have something that the customer wants, then you stay in business, and if you don't have something the customer wants, then you go out of business. That happens anywhere. But I think we really have a pretty vibrant downtown. As, as it stands, we don't have vacancies. You might see paper over buildings, but that's because people are moving and expanding, and it's not because they're vacant, it's just people switching places downtown. So in my letter, I had said, and I'll just repeat, that if, I would really like to support a stronger formula business ordinance, and maybe only allow formulas that are service-related. a stronger formula business ordinance and maybe only allow formulas that are service-related industries like banks, because there's really no such thing, or there's very few banks that are single banks, or mortgage companies, or, like I say, those that don't produce sales tax, are service-oriented businesses, but I'd like to see that we have a more stringent formula ordinance for restaurants and retail businesses to preserve what we have and the uniqueness that we have. So with that, I thank you, and I hope that you would consider what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth.
I have to say, I miss the comfort of my couch and my laptop. I'm gonna be stretching tonight after these chairs. Okay, I'm speaking tonight about the formula ordinance and the process of crafting a new ordinance. I know you're going to decide whether or not you keep the ordinance as is or instruct staff to go back and make some adjustments, and I would like to encourage you to do the latter, and I would like to encourage you to thoughtfully invite the people who are impacted most, the, the retail businesses downtown. We, we became aware of this agenda item on Friday, reached out to some of our merchants. It's just, we can't pivot like this to get people to come and weigh in on an issue. I know Pierre was talking about the workshop that was done on September 20th, the Peak workshop. I'm looking at the minutes from the December 10th Peak meeting, and there's no mention of a workshop that was happening on September 20th, so I'm not sure about that one. I know that there was one that was held on December 10th, and it has been stated that there was no interest, but I would, I would say that merchants during the height of their Christmas holiday season where they're gonna be making most of their annual income might not have had the bandwidth to attend such a meeting. So I would like to request that we have a workshop, that the downtown merchants be involved, that there be adequate notice, and, and that their input be accepted. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi.
I just have to say first of all that I'm not part of the PDA, I'm not part of the Friends of Historic Placerville, I'm not part of any group, I'm here just as a resident of Placerville. The formula business ordinance is an opportunity and a responsibility of the city council to keep downtown unique, and it really should be an honor to protect, to protect Placerville's uniqueness and character. It's not enough to have a conditional use permit, because then it's too late to get input from the public that has concerns about that particular application. The best you can do is make them have a good sign or something like that. What's happened in the past isn't necessarily what should happen in the future. There are plenty of appropriate places in Placerville to have formula businesses, and if something is not changed, it could get to a place where we don't want to be and wonder how we got there. I encourage you to have a workshop, to bring in experts even, and to really take a look at how we can protect Placerville's uniqueness for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Good evening, and it's all, as it's been said frequently this evening, it's so nice to see all you people again. I think the town could use a rest. You know, I don't think McDonald's has been waiting around for a court decision to decide whether or not they're gonna be on Main Street or not. I heard that earlier, and it's like, I don't understand that. I'm not a merchant on Main Street, I've never owned a brick and mortar store. I am self-employed, I've had to kill my dinner every day for the last 35 years as a consultant. I know what that's like. I'm heavily leveraged in a business in Eldorado County, and I hope it does really well, so I know what that's like. I would suggest that since we're gonna be talking to some, we're trying to talk, the Peak, I am a member of the Peak, we're gonna be trying to talk to some of the merchants about things like closing Main Street, this is something else we could chat with them about. We could actually sit down with folks in a nice, non-threatening environment and say, you know, what do you think about this? And they may all come up and agree with them and say, oh, you gotta get rid of this stuff, it's crazy. But it would be good to know, and that would be something that we could do. We could gather data, and, and then we could have a discussion about that and give everybody a little space to breathe. Main Street's been through a lot, the city's been through a lot, and this will be a very contentious thing. There's no reason, and we don't shy away from contentious issues, but it's gonna be a contentious thing, there's absolutely no doubt about that. So I would suggest you consider doing that. Main Street's been there for 170 years, it'll be there a few more years after this. It has probably got, put up with all sorts of calamities, way more than Taco Bell. That's not to diminish that point, I'm not diminishing the point, but things have happened on Main Street in the history of the town. It's burned down a couple of times. So pretty robust folks on Main Street can figure this thing out. And sourdough, as far as I know, has been open for how long now? And how many restaurants have gone out of business? I think the problem is, is that we don't give the merchants on Main Street enough credit for actually being able to figure out how to run their businesses in the face of competition. And I don't think that anybody should ask the city council to put the thumb of the government on the scale of capitalism. It's been working for a long time, and I think it will continue to work in the future, and I think Placerville will be okay. But I would be more than happy to add the list of questions about what they think of formula businesses and good and bad, and what they think about doing an ordinance, because it might very well be, we get some really good data out of that, and we say, yes, we should do an ordinance, and we can do that. Anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, John.
Brian Chase, president of the PDA. I think the issue here, it's about the unique layout of Main Street. When you have formula businesses all over Main Street, it really takes away from that. Broadway could use a lot of work, we've seen it, we drive past it, we ignore it. Formula businesses on Broadway, that could really bring up that entire economy and build it back up, bring more people to that area as well. So then you have a booming Main Street that's unique and beautiful, and then you have a Broadway which is also unique and beautiful in its own way. But as for the Central Business District, keeping it unique and beautiful with a formula ordinance that maybe only allows two like businesses, or just the five. I know that Carmel did a study where it was only two formula businesses allowed within a certain geographical area, and their business there is amazing, and it's not, it doesn't look like everywhere else. It's unique all to itself, and I believe that Placerville, right within the CBD, needs to maintain that unique and viability of, for its character. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seems like there's a 30-second delay in here for people coming up to the podium.
They're still on Zoom.
Just like on Zoom, on YouTube. All right, I see, it looks like we're good, so I'm gonna bring it back, I'm gonna close public comment and bring it back to the council for further discussion. So keying our city attorneys, pleased to not discuss the merits of the court case going on? What other discussions, what matters do we have to discuss here?
Well, my understanding, this is an item that started in 2019. We have a recommendation from the planning commission. I went back and I watched those, those meetings, and they were pretty thorough about their reasons for doing things, they explored a lot of these topics and addressed them. Those are our citizens, we have this citizen committee that we're getting feedback from, same as Peak, we have business owners and citizens on the Peak. If you didn't see September 20th, it was September 20th, 2019, if you looked at 20, that's probably why you didn't find that. And so the council was waiting on the outcome of the sourdough case to move forward with this, is my understanding. And so that has come forward and supported the city's decisions and ordinances. I think that we could use some better clarification on definitions for fast food. I think there was, oh, that was part of the problem, was the actual definition of what's in there. I, I personally don't see any reason to go back and rehash this, I mean, we can rehash every item every two years when we get new people on every committee. I, I saw a strong recommendation from our two committees, I think we could direct staff to work on clarifying definitions of fast food. You know, is fast, some people are saying sourdough is fast food. Well, is Timmy's Brown Bag fast food? Is Old Town Grill fast food? I mean, ice cream is the ultimate definition of fast food, you scoop it, you put it in a cone and you go. You know, I think for some people, maybe clarification on definitions would be an improvement, and that's kind of my thoughts on the direction that we should move, is to uphold the recommendations of our committees, but give further direction on definition clarification in some cases, clean up some of the language maybe.
Thank you.
I, so, I've been open to having the conversation, if, if it seemed like there was sufficient interest from the community, and I know that the, the folks here tonight care really deeply about this, I know that many Main Street merchants feel really deeply about this. I haven't seen widespread interest from the residents about this, which is a group that I'm particularly interested in, since that's who we represent. I do actually really like Mr. Clarici's suggestion that if he's going out to survey merchants already, that he could add this to his list of questions and get some data. I think data would be helpful. One thing, you know, when I brought this item forward, one, one thing that I would like to see and end to is lawsuits against people trying to invest in our community, and I, part of me feels like if we don't address this issue, then people that are coming to our town are gonna continue to get sued, which I just really don't like seeing. I think that that's really bad for business. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at. I, I would be interested probably in tabling this and letting the Peak Economic Advisory Committee go out and, and get a little bit more information.
I'm thinking. You know, my God, I've been in business in this town for a zillion years, and it just seems like there's always something bubbling downtown. And, you know, my late husband and I were in business downtown for a number of years, and now I'm in business on Placerville Drive, and I, at one time, we had a business up on Broadway, so kind of a, you know, know about all the districts. I just, I just think there's just so much ado about nothing. I really, I, it just, I think it's all about, I've seen so many, the, the formula businesses come into this town, and they're all gone. I, I think, I'm particularly remembering Denny's when it came to town, and all the restaurants, because we were, we had a restaurant then, and all the restaurant owners said, oh my God, we're gonna, they're just gonna kill us, we're, everybody's gonna go there, and we're not gonna have any business, and on and on and on. It didn't happen, and as you know, Denny's moved. Denny's went out to Placerville Drive. Leatherbees, same thing, they were gonna really create, Leatherbees left. We've had, and I, and there's been other formula businesses that have tried to make it here, they're corporations, and they expect their businesses to generate a lot of money, and it's not gonna happen downtown. That's my opinion. And I just think that it just, I, I think if these folks come in, whether they had one business, or 10, or 20, if they adhere to everything that we're asking, and we have our regulations for being here in town, so be it. There, it's, it's competition, and that's what business is all about. And maybe, yes, they do have a bit of a, an edge because they have more than one business, and they can maybe buy their products a bit cheaper, but again, it's competition, and people are gonna go, I think, to the people that put the best efforts out, so that's where I stand. I don't, I don't, I think that this has been run by the planning commission, it's been run by Peak, and I agree with Jackie that I don't think the general public really has too much, even if we had a, a public meeting, I think what we're gonna do is just have business owners, and we're gonna have to rehash this over and over and over. So I think we just have to make a decision.
I, I don't think I have anything to disagree with what Patty just said. I mean, we've sort of gone in a circular motion on, on all this, and same, we've had the two, you meant Leatherbees, Denny's, we've also had Quiznos, Starbucks, and Mr. Pickles, that all came and went, that passed this time, and so it's, there's not a great track record for actually any of these businesses doing well in, in the CBD outside of the ones that are sort of, I'll call grandfathered, KFC and, and Roundtable, they've, they've sort of held their own, but we've seen them come in and we've seen them fail. In fact, just like we've had independent businesses fail in this area. That all being said, I'm, I would be open to what Mr. Clarici brought up, which is, you know, one more go at it at Peak and trying to gather some more information. You know, at that point, I mean, my position is unless something drastically changed or we hear some really different information, that we kind of leave things as is, but I'm willing to take a look again and, and see, or maybe there's a better way, as council member Knows said, to clarify some language, and, and you know, and see where we go. I mean, I will say, you know, I've, tons of towns in Europe, and, you know, there's 1,200-year-old towns that have McDonald's, you know, in Florence and other places, and you know what, it didn't blow the absolute awe that I had of the architecture and the town, and, you know, nameplates every place that said something wonderful about the, the location, that were next to absolutely fabulous, you know, restaurants that were independently owned as well, and somehow, you know, it, it didn't take away the majesticness of London or Florence or any other town that I've been, big city town that I've been to in other areas. So, you know, I'm, I'm willing to take a look at it, but, and, you know, give Peak that ability to, to look at it again, and, you know, see where we go from there.
Dennis?
I have been all over the map on this, and, you know, there's, you know, question is, there's one question of why, and then there's a question of why not, and, you know, and both of those, I think, were important questions. One of the things I can say is most, if not all of the predictions of doomsday downtown have been wrong. And even back in the day, when we, when we did this, people were, you know, were really concerned, and I, and I remember, I remember going through this and listening to it, and back in the 2000 and something, 2001 or 2002, I can't remember the date, I'm sure it's in here somewhere. You're thinking, I should. Yeah, and, and, and I even, and I even called, and I've said this before, but I'll say it again, I, I called You're thinking. Yeah, and, and, and I even, and I even called, and I've said this before, but I'll say it again. I, I called Carol Pattonup, who was, who was dealing with this at the time, up in Montana. And I asked her, "Tell me, tell me a little bit about this." And she was in, and she's a staunch supporter of downtown and a big believer in, in having a unique downtown. Her and I worked a lot on the flower power. And, and her and I helped get started the farmer's market and things like that. So, you know, big believer in creating this environment downtown. At the same time, she understood business. And she understood, at least, she says she did, and I think she did a good job. Most people do, who have had a business downtown, get a sense of what's going on, as long as she did. And she was very involved in PDA and Planning Commission and City Council. And as far as I'm concerned, she was a good, great City Council person. She was on there with Wendy. And so, she said that this, this particular thing was there to protect the city from the outward appearance of businesses, but not necessarily put the thumb on what could be inside the business, not to stifle growth or stifle that. And the reality is, is that we still, you know, the flip side of this is we don't have any, we really don't have any big, you know, the scare, the big question, the scare question is, what happens if a McDonald's comes into town? Well, this is not a McDonald's kind of town. And it's, and it's really, it's a scare tactic, and I don't see it happening. But at the same time, I think we could put a limit on it, at least if they have over 1,000 locations, and I, and I jest. There's, but there's, but the reality is that I don't know that there's gonna be that many people or that many corporations wanting to come downtown and invest in it, because it's generally not their demographics. It's not a highway. It's not, it's not a high traffic. I mean, literally, the sales tax revenue of downtown is in the high $300,000 range, low 400s.
It represents about 7% of your overall sales tax portfolio.
Right, and it's, and, you know, we're trying to find a, we, I actually talked to the president of Trader Joe's about what it would look like to come into Placerville. He says, "It's never gonna happen. You don't have the demographics." And most of the large businesses, Starbucks tried it, Quiznos tried it, Mr. Pickle tried it. They all failed. Now, granted, they were not in the central business, well, they are, they were in central business district, but they weren't in the downtown area. And I think the results would have been the same. I don't think they would have ever gotten the traction that they need to make the numbers for a corporation. With that said, having Peak ask the question once again, I think would be a worthwhile endeavor. I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna hinge anything on it. I personally don't think we should, we should set a date and figure it out. I think if they bring something back that's worthy of consideration, I think we should consider it. At this time, I think that what we have in place, you know, is working. I think Planning Commission went through a thorough discussion on it. So did Peak. And I, and I see all of them coming back to the same conclusion. Now, you know, we could talk to the businesses, but also, we have the, we have our general public, because this is still a working, living town. And, you know, our residents, you know, look for our downtown to be a certain thing, too. It's not just all about tourism. It's not just about creating that perfect feel for tourists so that they come in and have that perfect feel, because people still come downtown for all sorts of things that live here. So, with that, I, I recommend we table this until the, which time Peak comes through. And if, if and when, when Peak completes that, we can take a look at that and kind of see where we want to go. Yes?
So, Dennis, another thing, you're, when you were talking, and then Dave said, you know, 7%, some of these businesses have gone to Broadway. McDonald's is on Broadway, and, you know, I mean, so, and same with Placerville Drive. So, it, it's not that these folks haven't, they figure it out. They choose, you know, where they want to go. And I, I do agree that they're, I don't think they want to be downtown. You know, this is a unique part. And, you know, we, I, I did hear the mention of Carmel, but we can't compare Placerville to Carmel. My goodness. Oranges, we don't have an ocean for number one. And Hangtown Creek's not gonna do it, I don't think.
Well, yeah, I, I think one thing that, you know, on, on fast food restaurants is you need a drive-through. I mean, the drive-through is sort of the, you know, that's why it's fast food. You don't even got to get out of your car. You just drive right through and pick up your bag. And, you know, without a drive-through, it's not all that enticing, I think, for folks to want to come in here and do that. I mean, the exception is in KFC, down, down there. They've somehow been able to work without a drive-through, but that is the exception.
And they do have freeway visibility.
They have freeway, exactly.
Yep, that is very true.
Right.
So, if this fails to have a motion to move it forward, it'll be tabled until a further date. Or we could make a motion to table it and move it to, and, and just wait to see what happens. Yes, Cleve?
I, I would request that if you want Peak to look at it, that you let me know.
All right.
In the form of probably a motion to say, direct Peak to, in the future, sometime to schedule this, so.
Oops, sorry. So, one of the, one of the things about the questions, there's, there's been, there's been controversy, no matter who asks the question. The question is controversial in itself if it's not couched in the right way. You don't want a McDonald's downtown, do you?
Right.
Or, how about stores that have 10 locations? Or how about stores that have five locations or 30 locations? It's all, it's all depending on how you ask the questions as to, as to, you know, what emotional response you're generating. And it's, and I think it's important to ask, be as neutral as possible and have these questions crafted in such a way that, that allows the person's own thoughts to come through rather than, you know, trying to gin up an emotional response.
And is it?
If we go down this road.
Is it possible that, like you just said, somebody has 10 stores or 30 stores? What they, if they came here and they're proposing something entirely different, you know, that they're not going to, that can be done. But that, I think, is when they apply for their business license and they see, you know, what's being proposed. I'm not against, I, if you want to have another meeting, that's fine. But I just, and also, I wanted to ask you, the lawsuit, you brought that up. Were we asked to wait to make this decision until after that lawsuit?
Yes, the city received a letter yesterday from?
No, 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 I meant before. Why did, why did we decide to wait?
No, we decided to wait because of the lawsuit pending. We didn't want to take any action that could affect the outcome of that lawsuit.
So, is that still the case?
It, it technically still is the case.
So, maybe that tells us what to do?
So.
You know, that's, if that was an important factor.
Well, I think what would remain concern was more substantive action, not just, let's, let's ask somebody to look into it further type thing. So, I don't think that precludes you from taking some action tonight, as, for example, referring it to Peak.
Okay.
Is it reasonable to think, this is a rude question. I'm gonna ask, because I already put it out there now. Can we ask questions that aren't leading, that aren't emotional, that aren't, you know, trying to drive? Is there, do we have methods to do that? Is there, I mean, I hate to say, do we need to hire a consultant to, to really look? I mean, because, because we did this back in, back when we had, and probably, I think, a lot of this, this, right now, what we have was driven by the multiple public meetings we had back in the late '90s. And it was, that's what drove a lot of these decisions that brought us to today. And firstly, I think it's worked just fine, and I think we need to continue to watch it work, these things were put in place, and not to try and have a solution in search of a problem here. So, I don't know. That's, that's my rude question, but I'm sure you can, I'm sure you can craft those, but I just want to, that's, it's an important thing to me, that it's crafted.
My, my answer would be that, that working with Peak, we would do our best to craft those. You know, you have professionals that do this all the time. I don't claim to be a professional surveyor by any means, but we would do our best to, absolutely, we want it to be completely neutral as much as we can to. The, the key to a good survey, I've always thought, is that it not only needs to ask the question, but it needs to educate the public on what you're really talking about. So, there's two parts to it.
And, you know, even having, if Peak, if the actual Peak members are gonna do this, this process, I think they should be, they should commit to keeping it as neutral as possible as well. So, yes?
Well, I just want to add, you know, I, I'm interested in what the businesses think, but I also am interested in what the residents and the people want. You know, I'm not gonna make a decision completely upon, you know, well, 30% of the businesses said we don't want formula businesses, you know, or, you know, whatever that, that mix is, because we've already heard through some of those businesses, through Peak, through the recommendation we already got. I, you know, I'm kind of opposed to keep beating things to death and keep throwing them to staff, where, you know, we have lots of things we need to move forward, and we need to concentrate on. And I don't see that we're actually trying to solve a problem here. We're just, let's talk and talk and talk. And I just have a hard time with that. I mean, if, I think I could support continuing it off calendar, and if something significant came, came out of it all that we wanted to consider, I, I might consider that motion, but I, I wouldn't consider a date or a time or bringing this back without significant findings that would change any of the recommendations that have been made so far.
All right, so, we get a motion to?
I said I might support. I'm not making a motion.
I, I would make a motion that we direct Peak to survey the businesses along with the other survey questions that they have planned, and let us know what the results are, and we'll take it from there.
Could you be more clear as to what you want them to survey?
If the businesses downtown have an interest in changing the zoning ordinance.
In what, Carol?
In changing the zoning.
Changing the law?
So, so to have a, oh, boy. See, we're already starting to get down this road. Could, Cleve, is that enough direction from, based on our discussion here? Could you?
I think, based on all the discussion you gave me, that we?
You understand where we're going? Okay. I don't want to try and strap you too tight here.
Can I make a friendly amendment? And that is, and I don't, I don't have what this would be, but maybe leave it up to staff and Peak to figure out a way to get some other responses from just the general public, you know? I know the water bills aren't a perfect solution, but just something where we could ask the question and try to get a little bit more, I mean, to Councilmember Knows' statement, you know, where we're not gonna make this decision just based on, you know, 20 business owners that respond, but to try to get a sense of what city of Placerville residents are also saying as well. So, that would just, I, I don't know if there's a way, I, because I don't have that mechanism in my head right now, but if there's a way to try to, you know, survey our residents as well, yeah.
So, I think along though what Dennis was saying, it depends on how the question is asked.
Yes.
Because, you know, we can, I mean, this could generate a whole bunch of, oh, hmm, you know, and?
Absolutely.
It isn't what it was meant to do.
Well, and I, I have seen a lot of businesses come and go downtown.
Absolutely.
Going on 38 years downtown now.
Sure you have.
And I have seen, you know, almost a lot of storefronts turn over several times. And, and, you know, good businesses, good people making a go of it, and it changes. And so, the people that are making the, making the comments today may not be the people of next year. And, and so, this is a, it's a bigger, it's a bigger issue than just some of the merchants downtown that have feeling that way.
And it's not, and I don't mean this in a derogatory way. It's not the cit, the, the general public, most of them haven't been business owners, and they have?
Conceptually, they may not understand the whole question.
Exactly, and that's kind of, that's where I'm coming with wanting to take a survey of the whole town, because I, I don't think that's what we want.
Well, I mean, people know where they eat. They know where they shop. And obviously, there are businesses making it downtown that the people want because they support them. They sustain them. So, I think you guys are gonna put a lot of staff effort into something where we could better put it, but I will support, as long as we're gonna do this off calendar and we're only gonna bring this back with significant findings.
Well, and it's, and it's being added to a, a process that's already in place. There may be an additional two or three questions on a, on a survey with the people they're discussing this with. So, I'm, yeah, because we've already done this. We've been around this block a couple of times now. 20 years ago, we did it. We're doing it again.
Exactly.
And?
And it'll be the same thing 20 years from now.
So, all right. The way, we have a first?
There was that friendly amendment. I'm fine with that amendment. Is that, Cleve, is, is that feasible to?
We can attempt that. That goes beyond adding it to another survey we're already proposing to do with Peak. That's a whole new piece that we would have to endeavor. And we'd have to think about how we do it, but if the council wants us to go out on?
That's what I was gonna say, too. What are you gonna, what are they gonna survey?
How much energy are you gonna put into this?
I, you know, the, the way I kind of see the process going forward is Peak is already doing a survey. If they bring back data that says less than 50% of businesses are interested, then it kind of dies right there. If they come back and it's overwhelming, there's overwhelming interest, then we go out and do, you know, kind of broader outreach with the community and see. I think, I mean, personally, I'm, I'm, I'm fairly neutral on this item. However, I think that getting definitive feedback from the community, so we can say, "Hey, listen, the residents want this zoning the way it is, or the residents want it changed, we'll maybe head off lawsuits in the future and make it a better business climate," is my goal.
All right, I'm, I'm fine with that. I can withdraw my friendly amendment.
Okay. All right, you get a second?
I'll second.
All right, I'll favor it. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good. We got a half aye. One aye close. All right, thank you, Patty. All right, moving on. And thank you for your comments. Let me find my agenda here. Item 12.3, approve $250,000 budget appropriation to the urban STB GP funds for the Western Placerville Interchange Phase 2.2. Always exciting to talk about this project, because we spend a lot of money, and it's not ours. Well, it is ours, but it's not coming out of our general fund. And item number two of 12.3, approving construction contract change order number five, number six, and 10, and number 12. How'd I do?
Pretty good.
I didn't steal all your thunder, did I?
No, you did great. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Good to see your faces. Oh, my gosh, you guys are a little bit bigger than the screen this time. It's wonderful. So, anyway, the item before you is one you've known about since the award of the construction contract. And put simply, it's to include ramp metering at the new eastbound on-ramp located at Ray Lawyer Drive as part of the Western Placerville Interchange's Phase 2.2 project. Ramp metering was established as a required project commitment in the design phase, and although the team was able to come up with value engineering solutions to reduce the overall cost of the project, as design revisions were incorporated based on comments from Caltrans, ramp metering seemed to be the one required commitment that we struggled to quite cover. When bids were received in November of 2020, they exceeded the available project funding. Additional project funding was identified in December by the Eldorado County Transportation Commission while working with Caltrans, and was identified in urban surface transportation block grant program funds, but mutually understood that the city, Caltrans, and EDCTC that the additional funds wouldn't be available until the spring of this year due to timing and process of programming such funds. However, time-sensitive work tied to the other state agency permits on the project required progress with tree clearing in January and early February to avoid nesting season. This necessitated the project to move forward regardless of the supplemental funding timing. On January 12th, 2021, the contractor was awarded with a change order number one that temporarily removed the ramp metering and brought the value of the contract down to a fully funded amount with contingency. At the time of the contract award, the bid item value of the ramp metering was $191,930. Since that time, the contractor progressed rapidly on the field work, and the project is approximately two months ahead of schedule. Additional coordination related to timing and scope of the ramp metering also took place, and I'm happy to report that by working with Caltrans on a concurrent and adjacent project, the ramp metering costs have been reduced from the original CCO amount of $191,930 to $113,703.40, yielding a savings of little over $78,000. Thank you to our project team and Caltrans for helping us shore up the cost of this item of work while not sacrificing the quality of work. The city received the authorization to proceed for the urban funds on June 2nd, and the appropriation of the $250,000 in funds is before you this evening for approval. As indicated above, the full amount of funding may not be used, and any unused portion would be returned to the commission for programming on other future projects within the county. The completion of the ramp metering work is dependent upon a few time-constrained factors. One of the most significant is pole fabrication. One of the most significant is pole fabrication. The pole is currently being fabricated right now in Nebraska. We got notification that there, it's in the queue, which is where we needed to be. So, if we had to, we could pull it out of the queue, but it's good to be in the queue.
Is this a pole that's like eight feet tall and has a little sign on it?
Have you seen the ramp metering pole and signal pole at Mo Flat, at Missouri Flat? Same kind.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Sure. So, let's see. So, as right now, the time-constrained factor is the fabrication of the pole. Because this item does add delay to completing the fieldwork, yet the project has been substantially completed, the team worked with Caltrans on delivering the items they could that would allow the ramp to be open for public use while we wait for the pole fabrication. I'm happy to report, as also Vice Mayor Taylor reported, that the ramp was open for public use on June 14th, which was last Monday. Once the ramp metering components arrive at the site, estimated in the fall, the ramp will be closed for a few days to do the installation and connection for the fully operational ramp metering system, just in time for Apple Hill season. Along the way, there have been other changes required, contract additions and deletions, and staff's report describing those changes and ratifications are summarized in CCOs 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 12. And the net amount for those change orders is $12,578.60. And this concludes my verbal report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Rebecca. Any questions? All right. Where'd the public go?
They don't care about the... An engineer can clear a room.
You really clear a room here, don't you? Andrew, would you like to speak on this item? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Wow. Oh, yes. All right. All right, that's quite all right. Thank you very much. So, I'll bring it back to the council for any further discussion or a motion. Not e-motion, a motion.
I will move to adopt the resolution.
I will second that.
All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye. Thank you very much, Rebecca. I'm always excited to see that project move along. I wonder, I want to know what your next big project's going to be. Multi...
Broadway.
Good way to go. Thank you. I'm not going to gasp. Okay. All right, moving on. Item thirteen, council reports from other agency meetings. Eldorado County Transit, I don't think we've had a meeting. We haven't had a transportation meeting. Lafco, that's usually tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Right. Seems like every time I ask that question, it's tomorrow.
That's not true. Every other week.
Every other week, okay. All right, Secog. I know that there's some good stuff going on down there.
Yeah, and we actually had a chance, so they're doing these pre-meetings every Secog meeting now. And Plasterville was, Plasterville's turn to kind of give a little presentation. So, I used actually our city manager's presentation on broadband that we had also used for CalCities. We got a really good, really good feedback on that as well as just talking about our, like, Measure H, Measure L, and just kind of stole what you gave to CalCities for our Secog Board of Directors as well. So, that went really well. You know, we, we had a good conversation about really the future of transportation in our area, how we want to, you know, see that go. And, you know, the ability, we think there's going to be considerable dollars. I don't know what, there'll be millions. I don't know exactly what that price tag's going to be, but there was $750 million programmed into the budget that will help assist COGS reach their MTS, SCS goal. I'm losing my acronyms right now. But there will be dollars there. We're going to really push to make sure that that's not just on apportionment, but also on the ability of that cog to show progress in that area. And with Green Means Go and some of our ventures, we've really, I think, have a good chance to bring in considerable funding to our region for those projects. So, we're really happy about that. There's also some money programmed in for more work on the, like, our Broadway project that we had a couple of years back. So, we think there could be some potential money for, to continue that process and bring in maybe some more experts to help our business owners in those areas. Then I'll just go to Pioneer since my next one there. So, Pioneer, the big topic there was really outreach, naturally outreach to not only our area, to Eldorado County, but also when Plaster to kind of build up the amount of people that are in the, that are in Pioneer that have either, so at least on Plaster's side, people that may have opted out or just, you know, didn't do anything. So, really trying to build up the amount of rate pairs in the system and to, you know, provide hopefully a really smooth process for Eldorado County residents, you know, as we go closer to next year and move in as actual full members of Pioneer. And so, that, they have some consultants in place. I was a little concerned on a couple of efforts. I think we need to probably put a little bit more resources into our social media outreach. I think we had, like, sixty-nine impressions, you know, which is, I can get sixty-nine impressions, you know, and by, you know, paying a dollar on Facebook, I get like a thousand impressions. So, you know, we have to do a little bit more there, I think, to raise awareness in our social media presence.
Who's "we"?
The Pioneer Board.
Okay.
The Pioneer Board. In fact, although I did offer to give them fifty bucks if it really helped to, you know, provide a little bit more of a social media platform and get that out there. But I think we're trying, I think they are trying, Pioneer is trying to figure that out. That's it.
So, explain that a little bit. Are they losing?
No, they're not, they're not losing people necessarily, but because it's sort of, it's an opt, or you can opt out, I think there has been people that have opted out or have chosen not to opt in. And it's really trying to build up so that the vast majority of people in the territories that they represent are Pioneer members versus still being with PG&E, because it's obviously more helpful to have. The more households you have, the better. So, there, you know, we're trying to increase the number of rate pairs that we have, and that's going to happen in Plaster County as well as, you know, as we make a transition for Eldorado County and the city of Plasterville. I don't know. Did that help?
It does. It just, the big, I think the big disappointment was when, is when all this was presented to us and, you know, we kind of, everybody was flying with, this is going to really be a big, significant, you know, change. And the minute it was brought out that we're going to have to use PG&E's transmission lines, et cetera, it kind of became a little less appealing than when it was first.
Agreed. I mean, and I think, and to our city manager's credit, you know, I think he had the long-term vision of, you know, should there ever be an entity that, you know, whether there's ever a chance in the future to have an entity that separates us from PG&E.
Yes.
You know, Pioneer provides a good basis of jurisdictions that could potentially, you know, go there. You know, maybe we look at a forty-year bond or something down the line to get ourselves out from underneath PG&E. And so, you'd have that structure there in place. And then the ability for them to make, you know, if biomass was going to be a big thing, you know, and it was going to create, you know, a thousand jobs in Camino, because we cut, we had to reopen the mill, you know, there could be some trade-offs where that might make sense, where we wouldn't be able to do that with PG&E necessarily. So, I think those are some of the longer-term reasons. But you're right, it's sort of de minimis, you know, on the other issues in terms of rates and things. It's, you know, a few bucks in one way or the other.
It's taking what little control we can take.
Correct.
Yeah.
With our purchase of our power. So, thank you for that, Michael. That was a good, good report. I think we covered fire safety council.
I think they, really, we really covered fire safety tonight.
Yep. That was good. Okay, request for future agenda items at this point? Do we have any requests for future agenda items?
I was going to say, like, do you want to?
Can we delete any of these off of here? All right. So, with that said, we're going to go to, well, future agenda items, future meeting next Tuesday. Should we discuss that now or?
You can. I was going to bring it up under my reports, but that's fine. Go ahead.
Let's go ahead. Do you want to talk about it? Go ahead.
Let me, let me, I want to bring up two or three other things I want to make you aware of.
Okay.
And then I'll go into that also. Just quickly, I mentioned in my last weekly update to you about the potential for a dog park we have interest in. I think it's a, I'll call it a feel-good project. It could really be positive. I've got some groups working on that and we're going to continue to pursue that and work with...
I don't think you're... There you go.
Well, nobody's, nobody's here. Oh, yeah, John's still here.
Andrew and John are listening.
So, pardon? Yeah, the site we're looking at for a potential dog park is the site across Broadway from the Thai restaurant on the corner of Broadway and Mosquito. And we've looked at several issues related to, we, I, I had to admit in the meeting we talked about today, I'm not a dog owner. You probably want to, why are you even interested? But I just think it makes a lot of sense. I think it's a need in our community. You look at people that want to stop on their way to Tahoe to let their dog run. It's very convenient there. People can walk down the trail to get to there very easy. There's already a parking lot there. There's water on site, water and power on site for, you know, what you need there. There is not a bathroom, but many dog parks do not have bathrooms. True.
I had to figure out whether you're talking about dogs.
For the dogs?
Well, but if you think about it, other conveniences, there's electric charging stations across the street that are very convenient to that, again, for people that are stopped on their way. Yeah, there's eating places that are, you know, I just think that it's a good, convenient location. And the other part of it, that it's very, to me, that's really an eyesore, that corner right now, that something there could be improved to make it, to make it better. So, anyway, stay tuned to that. We'll be bringing back more information on that one. I know Mayor Thomas is aware of this, but the Go Bug Monument that we've been working on for some time, it looks like we're getting real close now. We're making progress. I think we, I think we purchased a rock today, if that helps you.
That's what happened in the meeting that you were going to have.
It, we just got it done.
You told me you were, you were going to, so we could talk about what was going to go on it.
They're working it out. They're working it out between Terry and some people from the parks and Ron Mueller. I mean, they're talking amongst them just to get the wording to recognize the four people that really were the founding members of that, Pat Cook, and I honestly, I don't remember all the names.
Yeah, I don't either.
So, but, but yes, it's going to be a great monument.
And it's going to, the funding for it is being donated, so it's not going to cost the city. So, next thing I want to mention quickly, it was brought up a little bit about Civic Lab that happened a couple of years ago. There are funds available for, I hate to put it this way, but primarily for studies, again. But there is, we've been offered $100,000 and I think it will fit in well with Green Means Go. Pierre and I met with a consultant, there's one of their list of consultants this week. And the proposal is to do a feasibility study on mixed-use housing on Broadway. So, they would look at specific areas on Broadway and does mixed-use work there? In other words, it's already allowed there, but residential above commercial, et cetera. And how would that work there? Does it pencil out? It also will include some mock-ups, some drawings of what could happen there. And I, we did emphasize to them, we're not looking for affordable housing. We're looking for what we're calling the missing middle housing that you're all familiar with. I think that's a big need and if we could pull something like that off. So, if we can do this feasibility study now and then follow it up with hopefully Green Means Go gets funded, perhaps that puts money into getting some things done up there. So, that will be coming back to you probably at your next meeting. It's been an interesting process, Civic Lab, in that they're funding it, they're going to run the contract for us. We debated, does this really council, require council approval? And I think, I want council to approve it and see what we're doing. But you're not approving spending any money, because the money's not even going to run through us. It's all going to run through Secog and Civic Lab. So, what we will bring back is just kind of a review of, we'll have the scope of work from the consultant and bring that back to you on July 13th. So...
Yeah. We approved that money in the Secog budget this last, this last meeting?
Let me take that back. We decided we couldn't make July 13th. It won't happen until August 10th. There was a delay and being able to make sure we have the scope of work and everything we need for that. So... Last item is what we previously referred to, the interest in holding a special meeting. As you know, previously, we talked about having a presentation from Housing Eldorado and we, council approved having that done. Originally, they were going to do that at tonight's meeting. We had a pretty good agenda tonight with the other presentation. Plus, they didn't, we didn't hook up. I had talked to them early on, but we didn't hook up again to make it happen tonight. But the other piece of that, as Vice Mayor Taylor and Mayor Thomas mentioned, we met with the county about what we can do to have an impact on homelessness. And I brought up, we all brought up, we're specifically concerned about our numerous camps that we currently have and the fire danger that those create as we're going now into fire season. And how quickly could something be created? And so, what was proposed is that we present something to Don Simone, who is the Director of Health and Human Services. If there is something that we would like to propose that would potentially eliminate those camps and potentially put them in some sort of either facility, I will say, or a managed camp where they are, you know, you know exactly where they are. They're not going to be anywhere else. I'm not saying we're doing this, but that's why we need to meet. We have committed to Don Simone, if we want to present something to him, to have that to him by July 1st. And that's why...
And the reason that is, is because that's the deadline for him to get it to the county for their consideration.
Right.
Or their...
ARPA funds.
ARPA funds, which they have thirty-seven million.
Thirty-seven million.
And so, we're asking, if nothing else, to partner with us or to actually do it. And also, you know, we're asking them to even go a step further and consider something in the county as well. So...
So, the idea of this meeting would be to have that presentation from Housing Eldorado, see what they're doing. And then I will be preparing quickly, kind of a proposal for you to consider to send forward to Eldorado County that they might consider for this, this funding. So, we're looking at June 29th, so I would ask, are you available on June 29th?
I am.
I think it's an important topic because of the fire danger this year. That's the main thing that I see. And if there's any way that we could find a way to close down the numerous illegal camps, I'll call them, that are out there, I think it would be good for us to do. And I don't know what the solution for sure is, but I think there's...
What time are we thinking? The only caveat I have is that I may have jury duty that day. Hopefully, I won't get it. I might call the night before, but there's a possibility I could be in jury duty. That's the only, the only thing.
I'm asking you, for us and staff, I would say early is better.
You can make three o'clock.
But it's up to you what time you would like to meet that works.
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock on the 29th.
Tuesday, Tuesday, the 29th, week from today.
Let me look at... Terry, Terry's not there. No. See if we had any conflicts with the bill. We'll work that out. So...
The two are, yeah.
Twenty-ninth at three o'clock.
Yes.
And I think that is all I had.
Oh, I need my agenda still. Dang, I put it away. I think that's, I think the last thing to do is adjourn the meeting. Let's see, we request future agenda items, city manager upcoming, yes. At this time, it is quarter till nine and we will adjourn this meeting till, what is it, next Tuesday at three o'clock?
Yeah.
July, June 29th.
Right.
See y'all then.